And then we, we already voted.
My mic is bothering.
So are you going to give my life agenda to closed at the end?
Yeah.
How did he get that thing to go into closed session?
I'll start out first and respond to negotiations.
That was the last thing I heard that wasn't covered right.
Thank you.
And then we, we already voted.
My mic is bothering.
Thanks.
So are you going to give my life agenda to closed at the end?
Yeah.
How about, how about you just?
You can do it from your seat too. I can.
Um, I might have it. No.
So, so are you comfortable going up there or do you just want to sit there?
I think it would be nice if we did it up there and.
I don't intend to say anything. I'm not making this speed.
No, you're just repeating.
Okay. So we have Mel here. Okay. Then we give a minute. No, you're fine.
Please, I encroach everywhere, so.
Okay, we're going to call the meeting. Welcome everyone to the Beverly Hills Unified School District Regular Board of Education Meeting, January 14th, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. Could somebody please lead us into the flat salute? Mr. Rupiah, would you like to do that, please?
I should write in over your heart. Ready to begin. To the flag, the United States of America, and its sovereign republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as first order of business, we would like to, at this moment, install Mrs. Marcus as Vice President to the Board.
I want to pull items from each and I now.
Just, just, we're just going to install her first.
It's great to see you again. We'll take care of some unfinished business and some housekeeping issues that are very important to us. And at this time, I would ask that you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Rochelle Marcus.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Vice President Rochelle Marcus.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
We're going to modify the agenda a little bit slightly in that we're going to go back into closed as soon as the meeting is over, and I wanted to make that announcement. So, Mr. Margot, would you accept that?
Yes.
Modification to the agenda?
I will.
And Mrs. Mrs. Walker, would you also?
Well, Mel made this.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Spitz. Would you also? Thank you. Okay. So moving forward with the agenda. Dr. Bregge, I'm sorry?
I want to see what I can do.
Sure. Dr. Bregge, did you want to?
We need a vote.
We need a vote. Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda with the modification to go back into closed after?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, great, thank you. Moving forward, do we have a report from closed session? Dr. Bregge?
There was no action in closed session this evening.
Thank you. And we're going to move on to staff presentations. Oh, sorry, public hearing. Do we have any?
There's a card on the table.
I didn't see it. Can you see it?
Where the thing is you wanted to read.
Oh, thank you. That's right. We did have an email that came in while we were enclosed, and so this wanted, the person wanted this to be read. Dear Board Members, hope you are well and thank you all for all the, for all that you do for our students. Unfortunately, I'm unable to attend the meeting tonight, but I reviewed the agenda and I see that you will be discussing the fourth grade outdoor field trip to Sacramento. I know that this is an exciting opportunity for our students. As a parent and a PT leader, I have been asked by multiple, multiple questions and details of the cost and how it came to be. I really did not have any answers.
And then we, we already voted.
So you're going to... You might invite each other to closed at the end?
Yeah.
How did he get that thing to go into closed session?
Well, I'll start. I'll go first and respond to negotiations.
That was the last thing I hear that wasn't covered, right?
Thank you.
Tax collectors feel... And then, of course, when I really feel loopy, I'm going to run my money to us. Then you're going to, then you go, ah, that's going to be fine. No, this off? One on? Yeah, so you can, um, I don't even want to modify it. Yeah, just, just... I didn't say modify it going to close, so we're going to modify Rochelle. We can just do Rochelle after. After, yeah, yeah, I would say we just have some, um, official business to take care of and...
Okay, is everybody, where's Mel? Is Mel here? We're going to wait for Mel to see what's correct.
Yeah, I think so too. It's not an agenda, so.
Right.
I don't think it's...
Where do you put his daughter from? She wants to walk.
Oh. How about, how about you just? You can do it from your seat, too. I can...
Um, I might have it. No, I don't have it.
So, so are you comfortable going up there or do you just want to sit there?
I can go up there.
Okay.
You want to just do it here?
No.
Just two.
I have a pee.
I think it would be nice if we did it up there and...
I don't intend to say anything. I'm not making this speed.
No, you're just repeating.
Okay. So we're waiting for Mel to hear. Give him a minute.
No, you're so quiet.
No big bag is there.
No, you're fine. Please, I, I encroach everywhere, so.
Okay, we're going to call the meeting. To session. Welcome, everyone, to the Beverly Hills Unified School District Regular Board of Education Meeting, January fourteenth, 2020, at 5:00 PM. Could somebody please lead us into the flag salute? Mr. Rukupur, would you like to do that, please?
Raise your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and its republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, as first order of business, we would like to, at this moment, install Mrs. Marcus as Vice President to the Board.
I want to pull items from each and I now.
Just, just, we're just going to install her first. We're going to install Mrs. Marcus first.
It's great to see you again. We'll take care of some unfinished business and some housekeeping issues that are very important to us. And at this time, I would ask that you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Rochelle Marcus.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Vice President Rochelle Marcus. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. I will second.
We're going to modify the agenda a little bit slightly in that we're going to go back into closed as soon as the meeting is over, and I wanted to make that announcement. So, Mr. Margot, would you accept that?
Yes.
Modification to the agenda?
I will.
And Mrs., Mrs. Walker, would you also?
Well, Mel made this...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Spitz, would you also? Thank you. Okay, so moving forward with the agenda. Dr. Bregge, I'm sorry? Sure. Dr. Bregge, did you want to? We need a vote. Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda with the modification to go back into closed after? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, abstentions? Okay, great, thank you. Moving forward, um, we have a report from closed session. Dr. Bregge?
Uh, there was no action in closed session this evening.
Thank you. And we're going to move on to staff presentations. Oh, sorry, public hearing. Do we have any? I didn't see it. Can you see it?
Well, the thing is, you wanted to read it.
Oh, thank you, that's right. We did have an email that came in while we were enclosed, and so this wanted, the person wanted this to be read. Dear Board Members, hope you are well and thank you all for all the, for all that you do for our students. Unfortunately, I'm unable to attend the meeting tonight, but I reviewed the agenda and I see that you will be discussing the fourth grade outdoor field trip to Sacramento. I know that this is an exciting opportunity for our students. As a parent and a PTA leader, I have been asked by multiple, multiple questions and details of the cost and how it came to be. I really did not have any answers to these parents because, as you know, PTA and the parents in general have not been involved with field trips. I often wonder if an advisory committee may be a way to go moving forward. A Committee of the PTA Leaders, Parents, and Administration for Outdoor Field Trips. PTA involvement in this process would be helpful so that we can better communicate details to parents and address their concerns. I understand that a fifth grade trip may be in the works and it would be a great, it would be great to have this advisory committee in place before the details of this next trip. Let's get ahead of this together. We are always here to support you. And you never know, the more people we involve, the may bring pricing down. We do this as an, at the executive board level. This trip is a very exciting opportunity for our students and I hope that we can all work together on these types of trips in the future. With respect, Rusty Benegas, Hawthorne School. Okay, any more public? There's, oh, the dance company. Madison Heller. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Madison Heller and I'm a junior here at Beverly. And I'm here today on behalf of our dance company. The dance company consists of twenty-three members. The vast majority of us have been dancing all our lives, either in pre-professional programs or as a serious hobby. Our annual performance is coming up next week at the Wallace Theater. There are three performances total, starting Wednesday, the twenty-second, running through Friday, the twenty-fourth. The show starts at seven and is approximately an hour and a half. The show is produced and directed by our wonderful artistic director, Dana Finley. The production is a compilation of professional and student choreographed pieces showcasing a range of dance styles, including ballet, modern, contemporary, jazz, hip-hop. And for any gymnast, gymnasts in the room, like our esteemed Dr. Bregge, there may be some aerials or back handsprings thrown in the mix. Tickets can be purchased online at www.thewallace.org for $10. We really hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Happy to do a cameo as well.
Okay, so I'll just circle around. We seem to have lost our document with the items that you're all pulling. So, Mr. Margot, are you pulling something from consent?
I am.
You are. Could you tell me what you're pulling first? Nine A? E. Mr. Spitz, what are you pulling?
Nine H and nine M.
Nine L?
H.
H, I can't hear. H and M. Okay.
They were the same ones that I was going to pull.
Okay, great. We're going to go to staff presentations at this point. With MSA, the MSA update, Mrs. Lynch. Thank you.
Right here. So, hello, good evening, all of our board members. My name is Colleen Lynch. I'm the Medical Science Academy Coordinator. And I have here our former president, Gila Gelfer, and also our current president, Brandon Shabani. So they're going to be helping us with our presentation on our current MSA program and also what we would like to, how we'd like to build our program in the future. So, Gila?
Hi, again, my name is Gila Gelfer and I've been, this is my third year in the... This is my third year in the program and I just graduated from the biotechnology course, which is our second level course last year, and I'm a current senior. So I'm here to talk about MSA. There are three pillars into MSA, starting with academics, which is the curriculum-based classes, Introduction to Medical Science and Biotechnology. Then what really is run by the students is our leadership and our service aspects, which we'll talk about today in this presentation. So every student who enrolls in the Medical Science Academy starts off in the Introduction to Medical Science class. That kind of starts with focusing on the clinical aspect of medicine, where you'll learn diseases, treatments, any type of physiology and anatomy to different body systems, such as gastroenterology, obstetrics and gynecology. Kind of learning what a doctor might do in a clinical aspect, whether that's in a hospital, whether it's in their own private practice. This course also does fulfill the health requirement, so all students enrolled in this course do not have to take health. Then the next level is biotechnology. This is our research-based class. All the whole lab, the whole class is composed of labs that you do the whole year, where you learn the proper methods of, including HIPAA laws, research methods, using things such as gel electrophoresis and other methods that are used in actual labs throughout, like hospitals, such as Cedar Sinai, UCLA, all renowned hospitals use these methods. Well, here you'll learn how to solve real-world problems and deal with real-life bacteria. And for instance, one of our major labs throughout the whole year is called our Amgen Lab Series, where we stimulate the creation of insulin used in diabetic patients all around, over the world. So we stimulate the creation of that and follow a step-by-step basis using different methods and different things that we get from Amgen directly that allow us to perform such things that people do in labs and sell pharmaceutical drugs everywhere. And then here, we're here, Brandon will talk a little bit about our Cedar Simulation Lab.
Sure. So I'm Brandon Shabani, as Ms. Lynch mentioned, the current president of MSA. And this was the first year we got the opportunity to go to the Cedar Sinai Simulation Lab, which is a $35 million facility intended for medical residents. And we had the exclusive opportunity as MSA students to go to this simulation lab and perform some of the procedures that medical residents would be doing on their, during their residency. So you could see here one of our students doing a laparoscopic surgery on a pumpkin, because we went on Halloween. So laparoscopic surgery on a pumpkin in the $2 million Da Vinci robot. So this is just some of the opportunities in the simulation lab. We've also done endoscopies. We're doing childbirth next week or in two weeks. Go ahead.
That's just one of our amazing programs that just got added this year. I wish I could have done it when I was in the class, but I guess we'll hear about it next time. And then talking about the leadership, so leadership is run by a board of members composed on the IMS of two IMS representatives from the first year and biotechnology students. So while you're enrolled in biotechnology, you'll be running the leadership aspects, which is all student-run, student-created events. And it starts off with the first semester, probably in the first two months of school, create a bonding event for students, all students in the academy, to play fun games, kind of bond with each other, create a community within the school, because I think what's really helped me throughout MSA is finding like-minded students who are interested in science and really help each other grow and push each other to kind of learn new things and get involved in the community. And it's so fun to meet and interact with different students, because you know, you're in a specific period in your curriculum class, but then you don't really get to interact with the other sixty students who are enrolled in the class. Plus, there's a lot of alumni like myself, who are like thirty-plus of us this year. So you kind of get to interact with everyone and create more of that community within the school. And last year, we started the first event, the first time ever, we created a networking night, where students met people, medical professionals, from orthopedic surgeons to orthodontists to dental hygienists, and kind of got to interact with them one-on-one, talk with them. We had each student talk to every single representative for about fifteen minutes, and they got to go in the rounds, really gain internships, gain important information, see what types of medical field they might be interested in. I remember I going there, I was having such a good time listening and kind of realizing that some different medical professions I hadn't even thought of would be something that I'd look forward to. And that information is so crucial to find out now, so I can explore that before I make my choice later on in medical school. And the end of the year, we kind of culminate everything through our Academy Awards, where students are recognized for their excellence in presentations about medical professions, different diseases, genetic and non-genetic, as well as their collaboration within the program. And then we also present a thank you to all of our guest speakers, everyone who's helped us throughout the year. And then throughout the year, and in addition to the events we planned that I just spoke about, we also have a lot of fundraisers for the UCLA Chase Child Life Program, which we specifically partner with, who allow us exclusive opportunities to volunteer in their child life program. And then, and to help them for that, we create all these fundraisers. So for, in the past two years, we've successfully created our Halloween Candygrams. Last year was a Candygrams, this year was with Scrunchies, to kind of separate for students to celebrate fun Halloween-type ideas and we give them all out on October thirty-first. And that, and then in addition, we sell different cookies and snacks at BHPL games over the weekends throughout their seasons. And then last year was the first time Ms. Lynch and I worked with BH CPR and created the first school-wide CPR certification event, where all students were able to get CPR certified and to get their training certification if they wanted to. We had sign-ups, over a hundred fifty students signed up. It was a really amazing experience. You see all the dummies over there that they got to perform different, using an AED, practicing breaths, practicing compressions, and while they were there, it was also an opportunity for them. We provided a box for them to donate to the Chase Child Life Program as well. And then speaking on the Chase Child Life, it's been one of the most incredible opportunities that MSA has been able to have. I personally go there every week from 9:30 to 1:30 and I round on all patients, whether that's in the NICU or the PICU, kind of experiencing, I've held a baby in my own arms, which is something that I never thought I'd be able to do before I was even a doctor, getting an MD, which is something so amazing that I got to experience. And it's such a different feeling experiencing it firsthand than just learning that information in class. All the different diseases we learned about, they give me a full rundown of what the child has and I really get to feel like I'm type, type of a doctor, kind of helping them feel better, which is really amazing. And then every year, we also have our own team for the UCLA Chase Child Life Bruins Walk. We create our own team and we sponsor a specific child. So last year, as you see in the picture, we sponsored this little girl. She has polycystic kidney disease. Her name is Anai. Some of us personally, like myself, have volunteered with her. I would see Anai every week. We would play in the playroom. She would talk to me. We'd have fun. And then MSA decided to sponsor her, where we were the largest team last year in the whole event. And then this beyond our service aspect of, which is our third pillar. We just talked about UCLA, but in addition, our students volunteer at Cedar Sinai. We have over twenty students who are currently on the Teen Advisory Board of Cedar Sinai. So they not only help and are volunteers, but also lead the service aspect in different sessions, different training sessions, or in different committees, such as the Innovation Committee or the different party committees that they have, that they offer for all the teen services. And so within biotech, the service aspect becomes really important, where students are required to do more than, at least forty service hours in one of these two hospitals. And they kind of get the opportunity to explore their interest in real-life experiences and take everything they've learned in class and use it with it, whether it's at UCLA, whether it's at Cedar Sinai. They kind of have an opportunity to explore whichever one they wish. And then one of the important things in MSA without, within our service is not just directly volunteering in hospitals, but it's also helping our community. So MSA has been, our students have been involved in both the ban on the sale of e-cigarettes and the, and the ban on the sale of all tobacco products in Beverly Hills. Here, we were getting, given an award for all our work on the e-cigarette ban. And that just continued this past year, where we helped, I personally, I can tell you, I was there for maybe about six or eight to eight Beverly Hills Health and Safety Commission meetings, as well as City Council meetings, where we spoke about the youth perspective and how we want to eliminate tobacco use in the youth and how we think that Beverly Hills should be a tobacco-free city and how important that is. And then here's our bunch of guest speakers. Ms. Lynch brings a lot of guest speakers into both the IMS and the biotechnology courses, where we have different community leaders, different students, such as people in MD/PhD programs, kind of giving students a perspective of student life and their future, or different types of things that we learn, such as students will learn about otolaryngology. And then we have Dr. Nazarian come every year and he tells us about otolaryngology from his perspective, kind of using the information that we use in real-life experiences. Personally, my favorite one was talking to Dr. Ruth Malone, our professor on tobacco policy, who I, who that later helped me formulate my speeches later when I talked about the Beverly Hills City Council. I was able to use her statistics and her research, which was given to us, and to be able to formulate my arguments, which is really helpful. And I hope to continue that in the future in college. And then beyond just in class, out of class, helping in the near community, we have students all over the world involved in internships and networking throughout that, a bunch of different medical professions. So our students are involved in different programs, such as Gap Medics, where they have gone to Croatia or to Poland and have been in surgeries, watching live surgeries, helping out, being in different hospitals, twenty-four-seven. I've had friends who've worked thirteen-hour shifts in these hospitals, which is pretty insane for students at such a young age to be doing that. We have students also chosen to selective programs, such as the Cedar Sinai Research Week, where they're involved in a research, Cedar Sinai, all their research institutions for a week long, and they get to go involved in their stem cell lab and create new programs and kind of learn all about research in the aspect that's similar to how they learn biotechnology. We also have students who last year have, one student went and gone into the Osborne Head and Neck Institute, known as OHNI, where they are surgical fellow type of sort, where they kind of follow the surgeons within the institute and get to travel all over the world. We've had students who have been involved in this program and have later gone to India, such as the one holding the heart down there, David, who went to India and then performs surgeries on people and helps do stitching and helped, it's a third-world country, so he helped do all of these different procedures, because they're allowed to do that here. They don't have the regulations that the United States has. And then again, we have other internships, such as the K&amp;V Surgical Center. Personally, I started working this year at Roxbury Pediatrics, right behind the school, the California Rehabilitation Center, who directly contacted MSA, asking for a student to, who want, was interested in medicine. I get to go into different patients' rooms, check in on patients, get to look at different charts, which is an experience I wouldn't have gone without MSA. And then here, Brandon's going to talk about our future of MSA.
Hi, my name is Bridgette Mashkani. I'm the current Vice President of the Medical Science Academy. We just want to thank you so much for all your support. We have sixty-five members this year in the Medical Science Academy. This is not including seniors, just kids who are taking the courses, which are Intro to Medical Science and Biotechnology. But I'm here to talk about my experience with volunteering and the opportunities that I've gotten from the Medical Science Academy. As Gila said, we've gotten opportunities to volunteer at Cedar Sinai and at UCLA Ronald Reagan. I've done both. I've done ninety hours at Cedar Sinai Medical Center and thirty hours doing patient transport at Ronald Reagan, UCLA. But recently, I've been given the opportunity to volunteer at UCLA Mattel Children's Hospital. And this has been my second week, actually, volunteering. And this has been the most amazing experience of my life. These kids are the cutest, most amazing kids who, they come to the playroom and they are so excited to see us, because they've been in their bed the entire day. And the smile on their face is probably the most amazing, like, the best part of my week. And nothing is like, brings me more happiness than going and being, volunteering with kids. Of course, I love volunteering with adults, but MSA, I wouldn't have done this without MSA's, this opportunity that MSA has given me, because I love being able to create happiness in the pain that these kids are having to go through in these hospitals. And honestly, like, the MSA has helped me so much and I've just loved, like, being in this club, because everything that we do, we're always helping people, we're always giving back to UCLA Mattel Children's Hospital. Our entire club is based off of raising money for this hospital, so that these kids can have toys and they can always feel happy when they're around us. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Bridgette. And now we'll proceed with the presentation. So MSA two-point-O is what we currently have. So as Gila talked about, we have our first-year course of Intro to Medical Science, and it's a UC-approved lab science. And then our second-year course is Biotechnology, also a UC-approved lab science. And in that second-year course, the students get the opportunity of the Cedar Sinai Simulation Lab, UCLA volunteering with the option of child life placement, which Bridgette just talked about. And also, we're the only, we are the only high school students who can volunteer at UCLA Ronald Reagan. So this is MSA two-point-O, and this is where we're hoping to go, MSA three-point-O. So this would... So this would include the same Year One course, but now an Honors Medical Science, a Year Two Honors Biotechnology, also providing the opportunity of UCLA volunteering, and a Year Three course of healthcare internships, where now that the students have learned the medical applications, they can go into the fields and actually immerse themselves into the medical field. And this would be a UC-approved honors elective. And now we'd move the Cedar's Simulation Lab into the curriculum for the Year Three So MSA 3.0 would look like this, with the Honors Medical Science as the introduction course, following with the Year Two Concentrator Honors Biotechnology, and the Year Three Capstone Course Honors Healthcare Internship. So sophomore year, junior year, senior year. And budget estimates, there's a, there's currently a lot of unknowns with the budget. So Cedar Sinai Simulation Lab, that would be an estimate. If we were to do, if we were, if Ms. Lynch was to do more PLTW training, transportation to the simulation labs, new equipment, and also CTE grants. So now shifting away from the presentation, MSA is here requesting for equitable access to MSA courses, like all other programs on campus. Please refer to the course request for the 2020-2021 school year. And notice that all the MSA courses, oh, Hila's passing those out right now.
Thank you, Hila. This is for next year?
So, notice that all the MSA courses are the only courses offered that must be taken in conjunction with another science class. Now, please refer to the science requirement comparison. Oh, hold on.
Where are you at? I'm sorry.
Oh, I believe it was circled. It should be on the backside.
Okay.
No. It's on the second page. On the back, yeah. Under electives, is it circled? Yeah, the highlighting is hard to see. Yeah, it's got the two little carrots.
Oh, I see. Right here.
Yeah.
And up here.
Yeah.
Okay. Does everyone know now? Can you find it?
So this was given to students last Thursday as the course request for next year. Now, please refer to the science requirement comparison on the next page for an MSA student versus a non-MSA student. And you can see on the left, the MSA science requirements. So there's biology, the 10th grade course, the Intro to Medical Science plus a concurrent science, 11th grade biotechnology plus another concurrent science, and 12th grade healthcare internship plus another concurrent science, which is a total of six required science And as you can see on the other side, for a non-MSA science student, the two requirements are 9th grade biology and 10th, 11th, or 12th grade, one physical science, so chemistry or physics. And in addition to one recommended science, but the required is two. So you can just see the difference or the disparity between the required science courses for an MSA student at six to another student, which is two. In addition, please refer to the UC science eligibility right under that.
You mean this right here, the paragraph?
Yeah, the paragraph right under it. And it says at the end in bold, "MSA is considered an applied science and we are UC-approved lab science for the first two courses." And it states that "Applied science courses can be used in Area D as an additional laboratory science, i.e. third year and beyond." So in addition to the two required science courses, MSA can suffice as the third-year science course that's recommended by the UCs. And lastly, please refer to the California Dashboard Results on the final page for 2018 and 2019, for the categories of college and career readiness. So you can notice that there's been a significant decline in our school's ranking. By increasing enrollment in pathways like MSA, we can increase our school's ranking in the category of college, career and career readiness for Dashboard. And this is specifically the way that our school is compared to other schools in California. So I think this is very important. Yeah, sure. Okay, so the first one here is the 2017-2018 school year. And you can see that for the college career readiness, we're 73.4% prepared, which is the blue category, and that's the highest category. And then in the following year, the 2018-2019 school year, we declined by 7.5%. Yeah, that's our school. Yeah. So drop two categories within one year for college and career readiness. So now that we've taken a look at all the facts, one of our major concerns for MSA moving forward are the ramifications of the concurrent science requirement. For the first time during the 2018-2019 school year, MSA students in IMS as well as biotech were required to concurrently enroll in a science while being enrolled in MSA as well. As we saw in the presentation, MSA is an extremely beneficial program for our students at Beverly High. Nevertheless, the policy of a concurrent science has created many conflicts for our students and continues to act as a deterrent for those who are interested in being a part of MSA. For instance, our first-year course IMS is intended for sophomore students. If a sophomore is interested in enrolling in MSA, they must now select a science course to enroll in that same school year, but their options become limited because of the science courses available to them. If the student is ahead in math, they will be able to enroll in a course like chemistry or physics, which will fulfill the requirement for a physical science. However, a majority of the students do not have the math prerequisites to enroll in one of the physical sciences their sophomore years, resulting in them having to enroll in one of two courses, physiology or environmental science. And both of these courses are an additional life science, which does not fulfill another requirement, because most students have already taken biology their first year. So one of my concerns here today is if we are attempting to increase the enrollment in classes such as physiology and environmental science by implementing this concurrent science In addition, our school population has been shrinking in size every year, yet there are six sections of physiology this school year, while we only had five sections for almost a decade prior. This is only one example of many scheduling conflicts that have occurred with students interested in MSA. There are also students who have already fulfilled their biological science and physical science requirement in their first two years of high school, who can no longer fit an additional science in their schedule, but have a deep-seated interest in the medical field and want to continue with courses such as biotechnology and healthcare internships. We must acknowledge the variety of academic levels within our student body, and we are therefore hoping to implement a policy of equitable access for all of our students. The concurrent science requirement is limiting MSA students to a program intended for only high-performing students, rather than for all level of, all levels of students who may want to explore the variety of careers offered in the medical field, along with the amazing opportunities surrounding it. So MSA, in conclusion, MSA is requesting equitable access to courses with these requirements, one physical science requirement, one additional science requirement, and no concurrent science requirement, allowing students to choose when they want to take the, when they want to fulfill their science requirements. Please allow MSA to elevate student achievements and college acceptances, and to also elevate our California Dashboard rankings by having fair and equitable policies on student enrollment into MSA. Thank you.
I think I will go around and ask the board if they have any questions, and this will be the time we'll go around. Is that Mr. Recupero?
Yeah, I mean, it's very impressive, all the different ways that MSA puts on events at the high school and the service to the school, local, and even the greater Los Angeles community. So thank you to that, for that. Thank you for the presentation and pointing out ways in which we can restructure the requirements to allow more MSA students or future MSA students. The board is going to consider your proposal, so thank you for your presentation.
Okay, so I was telling Mr. Recupero what you were wrapping up with, and I wondered, so I'm going to address the question to Mr. Seaman. I'm sure you were waiting to jump in on this. Logic would dictate that if A through G requires two science courses, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, and MSA is requiring three in their proposal, in the MSA version 3.0?
So A through G requires a life and a physical science. That's the two years. So there's a differentiation. So, and this state CDE requires that students take biology. So freshman students coming in automatically are taking their life science. These life science courses become elective line, uh, science courses, because the next step is the physical science that they need to take to meet the minimal requirement for A through G and CDE and our board policy 6141.
Okay, so let's say I'm a freshman coming in next year and I'm interested in the Medical Science Academy. In order to successfully complete the Medical Science Academy 3.0 as proposed, it's three years of classes, right?
Correct.
Okay. In order to fulfill the A through G, it's two years.
Correct.
Okay. Which means one of those years, since we don't, we're not in high school, five years, hopefully, one of those years are concurrent.
Correct.
Okay. So what I'm wondering is, can that be the norm? Is there an issue, is there an issue with that being the norm, which would then, it looks like, remove two of the three concurrent classes?
Correct. And that's actually, Kim's in the room, the Assistant Principal of the High School. That, the biotech, and I just talked to Colleen before that as well, and the healthcare, the healthcare internships is a brand-new course that we're proposing for the 2021 school year. Those were never concurrent enrollment. Intro to Medical Science was always concurrently enrolled, and it wasn't just since 2018. You can go back to the original proposals back in 2008, when it was really proposed as a CTE course. That was always going to be, because you have to have a life, a physical science course. So it has to be concurrently enrolled. So that why, just to kind of clear the air is, if you were to take biology and then take two, the two years of Medical Science Academy, the students would only have three years of life science. They would not have physical, which would automatically deny them admittance into UCs and other institutions. In addition, what we have to consider amongst ourselves and the board is almost all of our students that get into, I'm going to use Ivy League or a UC, will have the series of biochemistry and physics. And it even states in on this page, the UC, that these courses then can become an elective science. If you refer to the D laboratory science, it states clearly, two of these three subjects, biology, chemistry, and physics. So I'm going to keep referring back to that. The great part about this Medical Science 3.0 is even the flexibility within the last two courses. So let's say that a typical student should come in in biology, should find a way, whether our system, and that's something that me and Kim will continue to work with, is our, our math, which we, now we have different math pathways in the middle school, which we hope that more and more of our students will come into the high school math-ready. They can then select Intro to Medical Science and maybe take chemistry as a concurrently enrolled as a sophomore, take that biotechnology as a junior, take that Intro to Healthcare, or they can wait till their junior year, take Intro as a junior, and then take biotechnology and Healthcare internships at the same time as a senior student. So there's a lot of options for our students moving into the 2021 school year.
So, so what I, what I'm hearing though, is that the way it's currently set up, where students have to take three concurrent classes in 10th, 11th, and 12th?
I apologize. The typo is the biotech and the healthcare internships are not concurrent, that the bunny ear should not be there next to biotechnology and should not be there in the healthcare internships. It is correct that it should be there in the intro, exactly due to your math, is if a student's in high school for four years and has to do a life and a physical science, they come in at biology, they immediately have to be concurrently enrolled in one of those courses, whether it be environmental science, which is a physical science, environmental science, physics, or chemistry.
Can I just jump in? I have a question, and it kind of is following Mr. Margot's question. Do we, our requirements right now are UC-aligned, correct?
Correct.
So, a student can graduate with two years of science, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess this is what Mr. Margot was hitting on. If the requirement is two years, why are we, and then I know that some of the students, for example, I know Mr. Shabani had like AP Chem, AP Bio, did you take AP Bio also?
No.
No. So there's, there's, some students do AP Bio, AP Chem, AP Physics, on top of physics, biology, and chemistry. So my question is, why are we, why can't, why can't they just do two years of biology or chemistry and then do all this other stuff?
100%, they can. Absolutely, they can.
So when we talk about concurrent, so they don't have to take physics?
They don't, we want to recommend that they take physics, based off, if you even read the UC literature.
Right.
And most of our post-secondary options. And I, and I think Ms. Lynch would agree, that most of her students do follow.
Do it.
Yes, correct. And when you look at, I'm sure we could probably go down the row, and most of our students here have taken advanced-level coursework within the sciences. So I'm kind of lost now.
No, I was a little lost, because they talked about physiology and I didn't understand. Was that, that's not a requirement, that's an elective, right? That's an elective?
Correct. So is this, this is an elective as well.
Right, but they can choose that path without having to do physiology. It's not a requirement at all.
Correct, 100%.
So you can, I just want to be clear, because the, the standard for this district is that two years, high school graduate, two years of science and you get to graduate.
Correct, that is our board policy 6141.
And that's, that's not just graduate, it's A through G.
A through G satisfies, satisfies the A through G. So I, I think I heard that there's a, six, six, six classes being asked to, so can you, someone break that down for me?
Am I allowed to talk?
Please.
Okay. I don't know the protocol. But I just wanted to clarify that it's an error on the form. And I regret that this error has caused a lot of alarm among the student body about six classes being required. The only concurrent enrollment that's required is for the Intro course.
That'd be 10th grade.
So what would that be? Sorry, can you explain what that would be?
Physics or chemistry.
Chemistry, not biology.
Or environmental science.
The Intro to Medical Science I'm referring to.
Yeah. No, but what it's, what we're trying to get clarification of is the concurrent science course.
Correct.
In 10th grade.
And let me, let me take it one step further, and I think it'll kind of wrap everything together. So I'm going to, sorry, Kim, I'm going to jump to the back page and address this to help us understand. One of the things that we haven't done as a district that's been great is completing our pathways. I've said this time and time again in this administration of, we need the Intro, the Concentrator, and the Capstone Course to get the credit for the actual CTE coursework or the pathway towards graduation. So when you look at the College and Career, which the student had indicated from the 2018 to 2019, we haven't been getting credit for Medical Science Academy all these years at CDE, because we've only had at CDE because we've only had two levels. We've only had the intro and the biotech. It's until next school year, the 2020, 21, if the healthcare internships runs, that we'll have the full three levels that would then impact this chart. Until then, it wouldn't impact this chart at all. In addition, so to explain the science itself is, UC and Board Policy dictates, I hate to use that word, mandates that students need to take life and physical science. Most post-secondary options require a life, biology, and then typical protocol is chemistry and physics. You'll be hard-pressed to find a post-secondary option that requires outside of those three. That's why it's also in the UC literature that the students had provided us. Medical Science Academy is giving our students an opportunity to collect additional life sciences as elective. Now, here's, here's one of the questions that I'm going to have to ask the group as well. The nice part about having Kim on the team is we've spent a lot of time looking at our CIF, which is our interscholastic federation, which, um, awards our students with the scholarship money from the state of California, looking at our UCs, and looking at our current Norman Guide slash Board Policy. So, an example is, intro to medical science is the only course that provides health, graduation requirement, and science. So, is it science or is it health? Because health doesn't give you science and health, and nor biology gives you science and health. But this gives you both science and health. So, does it fall under health? Does it fall under science? Or does it fall under CTE if it becomes a pathway? I mean, so that's even a much larger conversation than the presentation itself. Sorry.
So, no, I don't know. My last, I guess my last question is, so what exactly is the ask here?
Yeah.
Because I hear, I see budget estimates, I'm hearing about coursework, and I'm just curious, are we all on the same page? Are we on different pages? Because I'm not sure exactly what's being asked of the board, if there is something that the board actually has control over. Because the only thing we would have to look at is policy.
And it is our policy that dictates the ask of the students. So, Board Policy states that this can cover health as a requirement, but UC says it's a science. And then, in addition, we also say that you have to be concurrent because we have two years of a life science and a physical science.
Yeah. So, you have to be concurrent for a minimum of one year, but if you're higher achieving and want to shoot for Ivy League schools and stuff, you're going to have to take more than one year concurrent science.
Correct. But then also, just so you guys are fully aware, that the intro course does fulfill the health requirement for BHUSD that is a Board Policy.
Okay.
UC considers the intro course to be a science.
But they don't require the health?
Uh, the UC does not require the health.
None of them, actually.
The state does. The state, it's a state requirement.
But we can fulfill that requirement or waive that requirement if you're saying that.
Clarification. The health requirement, if they take MSA first year, that's a life science, they still need biology.
Still need biology.
But they get the health requirement out of it then.
In the current model, correct.
Okay. I'm good.
Ms. Lynch, did you want to say something?
So, my only question with the concurrent science, physical science, because we know that's the only one they need. We know biology is a prerequisite for all, the whole pathway, so they all needed bio in order to get in. So, then they only need one physical science. What if they don't have the math, which a lot of our students don't have? They're not ready to take the chem or the physics their sophomore year? Are we then saying they have to take a concurrent science for, when they take intro to med, even when they don't have the math?
They can take environmental science as a sophomore to be able to tackle if they don't have the math levels. So, we're not denying access into intro, uh, intro to medical science, they just need to be able to take the physical science course.
So, environmental science is not considered a laboratory science, correct? It's an elective?
But it's something that we will have to work on just amongst ourselves to make sure that that, that's closed. But I, I, I do have an additional question is, if we are proposing honors credit for this course, so part of the proposal is the honors credit, is are we not denying access for those students to begin with? Because aren't they already going to have the math level if they're an honors caliber student? Or what are the prerequisites to get into inter, intro to medical science anyways, if it's now an honors program?
Yeah.
So, won't they be in more than, more science and math level to begin with? So.
And that's, that's our conversation of, do we, do we go forward and push for all three honors classes? Or is the intro remain regular and the two others go to honors? Yeah.
Does that clarify? I mean, has it been clarified?
The proposal was the three levels. If you look at the presentation, it was the three levels would be honors credit.
No longer any, uh, regular MSA, the intro then. It's all, intro is honors.
Well.
Well, that's the presentation.
Yeah, that's what we said in the presentation. But the, that's, that is a good question. These are, these were the questions when we, when it was proposed, talking just with staff, like talking with Kim about, well, what, what would it mean if we do all three honors? You know, we have the current courses UC approved. Their intro to medical science, we didn't lose it, and that was a conversation Dustin and I, Mr. Seaman and I had about, well, we could get honors, the, the intro to med science honors status and not use it. You know, we could, we could, because what does it mean for those kids having to get into the course? You could still get it UC-approved and not implement it.
What is the prerequisite for, you know, to be in an honors course, like the, the intro to, to, to medical science? Like, what is the prerequisite to get into that honors course?
That hasn't been established yet for honors. Um, we, because we only have the intro.
Okay. Because this is the first I've heard of, like, level changes.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
So, I think we'll continue around. Mr. Spitz? That's a great question. I had the same question, Mr. Spitz, and then Mrs. Walker Schmidt.
Well, I've been listening as carefully as I can to the discussion. I hear, I hear, uh, a conflict to some degree of, of what the students would, what, what the students would like to have changed, and I hear the problems in terms of meeting And I, I, you know, I don't think we can work them out right here, but they need to be worked out. I'm, I've always been very impressed with this program and very, very supportive of it. And I'm more so now, after having heard and seen your presentation. I think this is unique and outstanding. Thank you. Um, let me ask a couple of questions of, of you, and then I have a couple, Dustin, for you. And by the way, this is all more impressive than I had imagined.
Thank you.
Um, as far as the, the, the organizations you're working with, Caesar, Cedars, UCLA, and Children's, um, is there, is there one staff person at each of those who more or less oversees this program?
Yes. At, uh, there's a teen volunteer program at Cedars that we've been working with since we started MSA. And then, uh, we have a staff member that helps to onboard our students, um, every year. So, every year to get all of these students onboard, there's a lot of liability, a lot of paperwork, and so it takes a while for that process. And we have staff members from UCLA help our students through that process.
With regard to the, the MSA courses and internships at those institutions, um, to get any kind of credit for our records?
We, that, uh, Ms. Stuben and I had worked over this last semester, for those that sit on the CTE Advisory Committee, on capturing and encapsulating those internship hours and credits, um, and revamped and reworked that internship application process. So, that way, we can find a way to be able to not only highlight programs, but also be able to share that with the, the California Department of Education also to show the different opportunities that our staff have worked on, whether being interning at Cedar Sinai or interning with, um, you know, the city's technology department. We have interns across, you know, the whole community that we're trying to capture all that information through our CTE coordinator at the high school.
So, there is some kind of record that comes from, from there as, in terms of what the students have accomplished, what, what, what effort they've put in, and they've been graded in some way?
Yes. For those that we already have documented, we have been able to provide elective credit towards their transcript. For those that have served, I think it's something like 60 hours each semester. And that's one of the things that we will be working with Mrs. Lynch on is, we're hosting meetings around just that healthcare internship course that we're projecting for next year, is that's a great way for the students that have been doing it on their own and on Saturdays, but it'll be a way now to actually capture it in one pretty package and provide not only a letter grade, possible GPA boost, but also elective credit towards their graduation in that third-level course.
Right. Mr. Seaman, um, you had posted an entry on, on the December 20 issue of what's called the Board Connection. And in it, you, well, you, you, your entry was regarding, and these are your words, misconceptions of the Medical Science Academy. And I, I'm going to use this opportunity now because I had a number of questions about that entry, and I, this, this is my opportunity to ask you. What misconceptions were you referring to?
I think we're addressing them in the room of the concurrent enrollment, and then what's a physical and what's a life, and what students have to take, and whether or not health or science, but also CTE. So, I'm going to throw another curveball at everyone in the room is, in the original proposal in 2008, Dr. Tedford and Colleen proposed as a CTE course, that was version one. It didn't become a CTE course, and it really didn't become a full pathway. In the second proposal, I think in 2012 or 2013, it had switched juxtaposition into the science realm where it currently lives now. But if you look at the California Department of Education, biotechnology is a CTE course. We could receive funding for it if Mrs. Lynch had received her CTE credential, what she did this year. So, when you look at the bottom, we're now able to, through the work of this last semester, possibly propose for funding to support biotech and healthcare internship. If we were to bring the intro class into the CTE realm, we can then also possibly propose for funding for that as well. Right now, it still lives in that science piece, but it also lives in the health piece as well. It's one of the only class, it's the only class that I've ever experienced that you're kind of double-dipping. You get health and science. No other class on our campuses you can do that for. So, you either take health or you don't take health, or you take biology, or you don't take biology. In addition, if we add honors credit, it would be triple-dipping, where the student would get a GPA boost, would get science credit, and get health credit for taking one course, when other students have taken a full year of biology, a semester of health, and maybe not any of them at the honors level. So, it's something else that needs to be, that's a misconception and something that we need to discuss. And these are all previously voted on by the Board of Education.
Right.
So, in '08 and in '12.
We had a lot of support for including health into intro to med at the time. I don't, I don't know if you are aware, but there was a time when the graduation requirement was no longer at our high school. So, it was during that transition that would give students, and when it was reimplemented, it would give students an opportunity to get a academic course. Oh, oh, sorry. I was thinking you're at a different level. Oh. Is that better? I had the lights on. And so, we, when, when health was reintroduced, it gave students an option whether they wanted to take the semester course or get an academic UC-approved lab science along with their health requirement graduation. Because the health, as you know, is a semester course. It's not a UC-approved class. And so, this would, would give them the health graduation requirement and an academic course. Yeah. So, that's what, that was very much supported at the time.
It, uh, I, I, I do just want to address one thing because I wouldn't be doing due diligence if we didn't actually address it. Since that proposal, though, the health requirements for the state of California have changed since things like gun violence and suicide ideation. And so, when you look at what we offer, say, through Apex or through Heather Godin's program, there are different standards that are being addressed, and I, I'm not, I don't know for a fact whether or not we're discussing suicide ideation and/or gun violence within the intro course. So, it's something you as a board need to take in consideration. If we were audited by the California Department of Education, do we fulfill those mandates by law for all of our students that are getting the credit that you guys are awarding for that health education? That's something that has also probably changed since that original proposal.
Changed. They also added the consent, the assertive consent on, on sexual assault. And we bring in the rape treatment center for those changes as well.
It seems to me that, um, there's still some work to be done.
Yeah.
On this program to, um, to get it together to where everybody is pleased with it, satisfied with it, meets all the requirements. It just seems to me that there's work yet to be done in this area. And I would hope that, because I, I think, I don't know, I can't speak for the whole board, but I can tell you that I'm, I'm, I favor this program very much. I think, I think it's fabulous.
Thank you.
And, um, and I would hope that in the near future, you could arrange, once you've, once you've really ironed out what the asks are and what can be done, and, and get, get it all settled out, that, that you could bring it before the board for a study session.
I agree. Okay. Mrs. Mark?
Finally.
There you go.
Okay. So, a lot of my questions have, have kind of come up, but I'm going to, I'm going to re-ask them in a, a little more direct way. Do you have any idea how many of your students that complete the intro course go on to the biotech course, percentage-wise?
I would say I probably lose about 20 to 20, 25%? Maybe 20%? Because we still have two courses. So, two courses, biotechnology. They are, I cannot, um, I, the only students that are eligible for biotechnology are students that took intro to med. So, they're smaller course, they're smaller classes.
Right.
But since we grew it to four sections, two intro to med and two biotech, we've always had fulfilled two, two of the classes.
So, only 20% attrition between the intro and the biotech?
I would say maybe 25%. Depends on the year, too.
So, I'd be, I'd be interested in looking at that. I mean, since we have a lot, it's 12 years now we're going on, and I understand there have been changes, so maybe not go back as far as that. But just in the last maybe three years, um, you know, do we, has there been a reduction in the kids that are leaving between intro and biotech? Or has it increased? And what would that be attributed to? The concern that I have is that, I get the pathway and I love the, the academy itself. My concern is students that end up using the intro as a, um, as a way to avoid a science class, that just take it as a way of avoiding a, a more challenging science class. So, so I think that's something that we ought to look at, just the numbers, to see what it looks like.
Sure.
Maybe it's significant, maybe it isn't. In terms of health, I have two kids that took it over the summer, so I know that the whole curriculum can be delivered in two and a half weeks of, of health class. Do you, do you cover suicide prevention and STDs and sex ed?
Yes.
The same as a regular semester class of health for all the rest of the students that need to graduate?
We do OBGYN, and we do male reproductive system. In fact, in the SIM lab that we're going to on the 23rd, we're, we're going to be, we're actually going to be seeing live births, or simulated live births. Everything is done with mannequins, so.
You're going to say, wow, that is some serious access right there. I want to know who that mom is.
And I'll tell you, what was so interesting is everyone signed up for it, and we didn't have enough spots for that one.
Okay.
So, so yes, we cover all sex ed, comprehensive sex ed, that's the law. So, there's certain mandates by the state, like HIV, I have to cover HIV. So, you know. So, you know, these things are not within my control, they're just the mandates.
So, but when, I know that it wasn't part of the requirement, and then it came back. So the program, the curriculum content changed to meet that standard?
Yes, yeah.
For sure?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess.
Can I ask a clarifying question, just because this would be the venue in which we would need to make sure that you guys are secure and safe is, so for high school health itself, the following topics that need to be met is nutrition and physical activity, growth and development, sexual health, injury prevention and safety, alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, mental, emotional, and social health, and personal and community health. Those are the topics that we have to hit within the ninth through 12th grade in some format, whether that be in the isolated health course, ILC online, and/or currently right now, the Intro to Medical Science Academy.
So I would just want to know that for sure all of those things are contained in the content of the Intro to Medical Science, if that's what we're getting credit for, or that's what those students are getting credit for? Because everyone else has to take it either as a summer course or a semester course and get all of it. So because it's our requirement for graduation as a district, I think that it's important to make sure all of that content is included. I wanted to ask, because we've just gone through this reconfiguration, and we spent a lot of time talking about how to differentiate for our different levels of students for all the different classes at the middle school. So we now have, you know, three different levels, right? When we're talking about making the intro class an honors class, and what you want is equity, how do you reconcile having students take regular bio versus honors bio and then go into an honors introduction class from the regular bio class? Wouldn't that necessitate a regular, like a regular level Intro to Medical Science? So you're actually creating an entirely different path?
Yeah, like I said, these are the things that, you know, these are the things that we're still, I guess, evolving as far as what we want to do. And we had a parent night here, and I basically said to the parents, tell me what you want. You know, would you prefer to have a regular class, or would you prefer to have an honors class? And, you know, I'm not opposed to either one. I want to give our students options, and so, and give them the best, you know, shot at being competitive when they fill out their college applications. I know that there are other schools that are offering similar courses with that honor status, so that's when I, when you see that happening in other schools, we could be doing that as well. We could be offering that as well. So that's our conversation. I don't think any decision has been made, you know, definitively of, are we going to do all three honors? But the fact is, other schools are doing it, and we probably should be looking at that as well.
But I would say to that, the kids that are taking honors classes and then on to AP classes are carrying a heavier course load, doing more advanced level work. So if you're going to give that honors credit, then how do you also create equity and access for students that are not high achieving, or that don't take the more challenging math and science? Like if part of the impediment to the sophomore year is having the math prerequisite met, then, you know, if we're going to create a pathway, we need both pathways, a regular level and an honors level. So if you, you can't just replace the class altogether as an honors class and just throw everybody into it. That's literally what we were doing, you know, in the middle school, and it wasn't working well, because students weren't getting their needs met. And then you had kids in honors classes that weren't really doing the honors level work, and they were struggling.
Yes.
So we don't want to replicate that in this environment.
Yep.
So if it's going, if there's going to be an honors level, then there also ought to be a regular level.
Yep.
And if students can perform at a certain threshold in that regular level and can advance the next year to the honors level, okay.
Yep.
They have to be, you know, it has to be fluid, like we have at the middle school too. But I don't think it can be one or the other. I don't think that's fair to the students that are doing, you know, the heavier lift work.
Yeah.
To get the honors credit.
Yep.
And then in terms of prerequisites, I think, I mean, that's kind of wrapped into the same conversation. I think it's reasonable that if a student's taking regular bio as a freshman, that they're not going to jump into an honors class as a sophomore unless they've gotten a 95 percent or above in that class.
Right.
Right? Because a student taking honors bio as a freshman would be able to move directly into that honors intro class, right?
Yeah.
Has there been, I hate to get away from just the awesomeness of the program and go into the, like, financial impacts, but has there been any kind of actual budgeting done for what the lift would be from a budget standpoint? Have you been asked to put together, because I assume if you're going to have additional pathways, you need additional teachers to teach additional sections?
And that's part of this. So we are able to offer the healthcare internship. It's part of the student selection sheet, and obviously, when we have finished the elective selection process, those kids are going to go somewhere. So at that time, that'll be a board conversation within close, is what are some of the sections that will close due to low enrollment? What is our threshold number? So we're not guaranteed that we're going to be able to offer that third level without ensuring the total number of students that enroll in the course is high enough to justify the outcome. Currently, right now, one of the budget asks is the $10,000 for the cedar cyanide, the SIM lab, which is fantastic, and I think that the students have reaped a lot of benefits from it. I think it's probably one of the cooler things that we have been able to tackle here in BHUSD, but that's currently coming out of the Materials and Supplies Fund and Ed Services as we engage our conversations around budgeting during the second semester for proposing for 2021. That's something that the high school administration ourselves will have to take in consideration if that third-year course runs, we'll have to pay that $10,000. The other financial ask, just as, one of the things that is posted on here is the Project Lead the Way. There are options of courses that are out there that are aligned in Project Lead the Way that are honors-bearing and also regular-bearing. If you look at the courses that are UC-approved for honors, they are the Project Lead the Way courses, so that would require some level of training for Mrs. Lynch to be able to deliver that. And then obviously, if we are furthering the SIM lab options for students, eventually we probably want to talk about transportation, just to ensure that our students are safely getting from the high school to cedar cyanide. But, you know.
Are there any other schools that have a medical science academy like this, other than us? I know we're awesome, but.
Yes, yes.
There are. And then they have, they get UC credit, and they're also elective, and they also, there's CTE.
So if you pull the UC list and you actually type in medical science, they will all be CTE courses. So almost the whole state of California, all the approved programs are either in the ROP, which is the Regional Occupational Program Centers. So a lot of them are going into being coming future RNs, and, or if it is within, it's not the Project Lead the Way course, if it's a separate, isolated Intro to Medical Science, it's a CTE pathway within that high school.
So that, my concern is being too many things to too many people with this one, with this academy. I love it, and I think we need to continue to grow it. My concern is trying to be an elective and a science and a CTE, and trying to, you know, expand in all those directions at one time. I'm afraid that, you know, when you do everything, generally you don't do it well. When you focus, you kind of tend to be more spectacular in that focus area. And while I want all of the kids to have all of the, you know, opportunities to challenge themselves and to have success and to follow their passion, I want to make sure that we do it in a thoughtful way. So I think, I love what I'm hearing. I think we need to have more conversation about this and see, you know, how we can make some decisions to form this so that it really is the best of all worlds for the students.
Well, I go along with Mel said about being extremely impressed with the program that. Of course, I attended the awards assembly last year that you had. It was my first time to really get involved in the program. Was extremely impressed by it, and of course, you had me right then and there with this program as a science person.
Thank you.
And I would hate to have to see anything happen to this program. That's my main concern. I have a couple of questions. Mrs. Walker Schuman asked a question, and I also had it. I wonder, though, if you could answer, did you ever do a survey of why the numbers of kids who take the first class then do not go on and take the second class? Do we have any reason why they don't follow up on the second year?
Yeah, I do. Some students learn that this is not what they want to do. That's one thing. One of the things that we do, we send them to Cedars, because they only have to be 14 to volunteer. In fact, my TA, she's no longer in my course, but she's my TA, she just came up to me the other day and said she's so thankful that she got exposed to the medical field so that she knows, well, I'm not going to pursue that. You know, so it's about exposure, really. I also have kids that didn't take biotech their junior year but are coming back to me, I just signed their papers, coming back to me their senior year.
Okay.
Right? So it might be that their schedules are so impacted from whatever else they want to take, that they may not be able to fit it into their schedules. And that's the issue with the concurrent science that.
I'm going to get to that.
Yeah.
So by this, and people know this about me, I don't like to see classes that are not filled with the numbers. And I'm concerned that if we're going to run a lot of classes with low numbers in the classes, that bothers me. I don't want to see classes that you can justify numbers in the classes, so therefore, I don't want to see three sections of something where it could have been done in two sections at the same time. So this has always been a concern of mine. The other thing is, I'm having a hard time with this one question. What is the rationale? Why do we have to have extra classes for the kids taking the MSA class and the kids that don't go into MSA? Why do these kids have to be punished? It's like a punishment to me that these kids are taking, they're being forced to take more classes, and their schedules are already filled with everything that they do. Why are we doing that to them?
I'm going to jump in, though, real quick. So it's not a punishment, and we aren't requiring students to take extra classes. Let's all.
It's required. Concurrent. It's concurrent. That's me as required.
No, no, no. Sorry.
I was just going to say, if the UCs would come around and recognize the courses as to fulfill their requirements and waive other courses that we, that they currently require people, and the state, okay? So the state and the UC systems would say, yeah, if you want to take the Medical Science Academy and you go through it, you don't need to do this, this, and this. But they haven't done that. So now it's stuck as either an elective, I mean, the whole program, really outside of the first year, is an elective. And that's therein is the problem, and that's what the problem the students are having. So it's not us at all. I don't think.
No, I see Mrs. Marcus's point, and I'll let her explain it. If not, I'll jump in when it's my turn.
He said this was an error. So it's only that one year that it's concurrent.
It's not an error. It is an error.
Ms. DeCarr's house stood up, and she said, unfortunately, it was an error on her behalf.
Well, you're still requiring them to take physiology.
No.
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 No?
So what were we talking, okay, so I just want to be clear then. Are you saying it's biology ninth grade, which is our requirement?
It's a state requirement.
10th grade, if they're in the Intro to Medical Science, they're required to also, just like any other student, take chemistry, right?
Or physics.
Or physics. Well, they can't take physics before chemistry, right? I mean, this is.
But they're going to get their, they're going to get their physical science in with one of those two classes somewhere, right?
One of the three.
Okay, now that's.
And then they can be done. They could be done. They can be done.
Yep.
And then for 11th grade, they can go biotech. If the student, like Mr. Shabani, or all the students here, I think mostly, if they wanted to, they could take biotech and a concurrent science, right? That would be optional. It's not.
That's optional?
That's optional. If this is incorrect, that's why, am I supposed to understand this?
Correct.
I want to be clear that I understand this, because this is confusing.
Well.
This is really a big, I don't know how this, you made a mistake twice, not once, but twice. Because on 12th grade, we have healthcare internships, and then concurrent science again was listed. So you're telling me that those were two mistakes?
This is, yeah, the student presentation is this. This is the course selection, and when they marked it, they marked the Medical Science Academy courses as concurrent enrollment. It's the intro course, and again, I'm going to go back to just the simple math of it all. UCs and everybody else requires a life in a physical science.
Right.
And so it's something we cannot get away from.
I understand.
So there has to be that concurrent level.
We understand.
At some point throughout the program, typically in your intro. In addition, I will say this, that most of our counselors, and I will encourage this, always still talk about the biology, the chemistry, the physics.
Sure.
And I'm going to go to those that have had students that have applied to post-secondary option.
Yes.
That is some of the questions on the application process that does supersede Medical Science Academy. It is a fantastic, wonderful program, and I'd love to work with Colleen to even build it bigger and better and brighter. But we also want to focus on our post-secondary options, our graduation rate, and who is college-ready? So who is college-ready? And it is said to us that those students that are able to complete a biology, a chemistry, and a physics, and that is from every high school.
And beyond.
Not just us.
No, and I think that's a good point to make. I understand. Is there anything else?
No, that, just a minute. No, I think that, that was my biggest question, was why? Evidently, that's not the case.
So just to reiterate, I'm glad that you clarified that for me, so I just want to be, so I think this should come back to us in a cleaner form, so that we understand there's clarity as to what the expectation is for this program, and also what other paths exist within this path. If you want to make a more rigorous science choice as you come into Beverly, you can, like Dustin just said, you know, you can totally take the advice from your counselor to take chemistry and beyond, physics, and maybe AP, maybe some of the APs, but it shouldn't be a requirement after those two years are fulfilled. I would be in support of that, but it should come back to the board very cleaned up, stipulating that so that there is no confusion amongst the students and their families.
And the administration.
I totally, yeah, this is, but for me, you know, the students are key, because if they don't understand the clarity behind this, then I don't think they will enroll, and we're going to start losing enrollment, and then the program, let's just face it, will go away. Yep. And that's something that I think would be, I know that this community, Beverly Hills, really values doctors, and having their child, I mean, they love for our children to go to UCLA, USC. I'm an advocate of students to go anywhere they want to go, but, you know, we want to open doors and not make it difficult for students to go into those universities. So I think these universities are very friendly to Beverly Hills, and I think this is a clear pathway. So I'm totally in support of the program, and I'm not sure if you're going to make it an honors program or not. I think you'd really need to study your numbers and come back to us and tell us, it makes more sense. It adds more, for me, it's more about access, you know? Where are we providing more access to our students? Yep. And who knows? It might be that student who's looking just to fulfill biology and physics, and then they're, I'm sorry, biology and chemistry, and then doing these courses concurrently, and then all of a sudden, they are, you know, they become so involved in the program that they want to go beyond chemistry into physics and the AP. So I think, I think it works well. I think the beauty of this is that we're giving our students options. Yeah. For growth or for a different path. And I don't want to make it so strict where we are not making it accessible and friendly, user-friendly for our students. Does that kind of make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. And that's it, and I really appreciate the students being here tonight. Mrs. Lynch, Dustin, all your work and for your clarity in providing information to the board that we haven't really decided whether or not this is an honors path, because that was very important.
Right, right. And that's just the only thing I wanted to bring up. Most of my experience is at the high school level, and I just have, it takes a long time to turn around a system like we've done with our middle school with the leveling. And I just want to, this is the first that I've heard of an introduction of an honors class, and I just want to, you know, it's so much more than just the title of a course. And so, you know, I was just a little alarmed by the fact that, you know, what makes it an honors course?
Sure.
Not just the name.
Sure.
So I would, you know, like to be involved in those conversations with you and Mr. Seaman as we move forward.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you, students.
Thank you for listening. Thank you for your support. I really want to say that from the bottom of my heart. We work really hard, and our students work really hard on all of these things, all of these community events, and to have your support means the world to us, so thank you.
Can I say one last thing? So we regret the error on the form, because we don't want to message to the community and the students that you have to do six science classes. So in an effort to mitigate a negative impact on the program, thankfully, we still have an opportunity to meet with the ninth-grade students, and actually, most of, almost all of the students will be sitting with their counselors for their individual course selection meetings, and we can explain and clarify to students at that time. We'll have an opportunity, as well as open house when we do our presentations, and we have the information tables in the showcase. So we'll do our best to clarify the error on that.
You know, Ms. Decker, thank you so much for bringing that point up, because that was gonna be a question for me. When you all met, I think you all had a meeting last, this week or last week, I can't remember, it was on the Board Connection, with the head counselor, I think the head counselor was gonna be there. Did, was this clarified in that meeting?
No, we waited, me and Ms. Lynch actually met, and we waited to bring a lot of this, because of the misconceptions in the community, we needed to just be able to have this as a presentation, so that way we weren't talking in private meetings, that the conversation is being had out loud, and making sure that we can iron these things out.
So how are the, do the counselors know that this is a mistake, or how are you, how are you communicating that to the, to the counselors so that the right information gets transferred to students as they make these decisions going forward with the choices of those courses that they're signing up for next semester?
Well, I've already sent an email, sitting here today.
Okay.
And I will meet with them in the morning before they start their course selection meetings, so that we can hash it through verbally as well. I know, we've talked about it several times, I think that there was an understanding in the conversation, and I'm, it's my error for not catching the mistake on the concrete form itself, that I think it just didn't get changed. So we'll have to, we'll have to have the conversation in the morning.
Great, thank you. Okay. Moving on. So I am going to, I am needing a, do we have another presentation? No, that's it.
I'm starting at services, I can do it now.
You're doing it now?
If you, I don't know.
It's coming up.
Okay, so we're gonna move to the consent calendar, and I'll need a motion to approve, and I am going to take away items nine E, nine H, nine M, and nine I. Dustin, I should ask you, are you going to be speaking about Apex later on in your presentation?
Correct.
So should I, well, I should probably just, hmm, okay, we'll just, I'll pull it, and then you can expand.
You want a motion?
Yes, I need a motion in a second, please.
I move to approve the consent calendar with the exceptions of nine, three.
Nine E.
Nine H, nine M, and nine I.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. Okay, discussion.
No discussion on consent.
No, I'm sorry, I need a, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Margot, go ahead. Who pulled nine E, Ms. Margot?
I pulled it.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the two contract.
I second.
Okay, motion moved by Mr. Margot, and seconded by Mrs. Wachusen.
So I had asked staff a question about utilizing any of these grant funds and incorporating vaping into it, and I was told that we can't, because vaping is not part of the two grant.
Correction, we can.
We can.
I followed up on that this morning.
Great.
With the county, and we can.
Okay, 'cause I figured tobacco's tobacco, whatever form it comes in, so.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Thank you.
Catching up with the times.
Great, I don't wanna belabor it, thank you very much for getting clarification on that. Okay, I'm good.
And so my question is, are, are we going to be, how, can you come back to the board at some time, or are you gonna do that tonight, letting us know what you intend to do?
I'm gonna have Phil Wanker, who's my coordinator, who oversees the grant, come and do a presentation to the board on the 28th.
And hopefully, some of the issues that were addressed through, or brought up to our attention through the panel, he, he can try to leverage some of those, you know, capture some of those.
Those questions, yeah, concerns.
Yes.
We'll do our best. Additionally, I just wanna kinda put this on the board's mind, we, we probably wanna look at expanding what we're doing, because this, this grant is under $30,000. So I think that that'll be a time that we can have a discussion about how we want to address this as a district as well.
And I just wanna, just to share this with everyone, Mr. Spitz, and myself, and of course, Mrs. Marcus as well, and I think everyone in the board really stipulated at the last panel, when the students, during the student panel, that we wanted to do more, but we also have called for a study session on this issue. So I know that that is going to be happening sooner than later, and so I think this will all be helpful.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, who pulled?
We need a vote on that.
I'm sorry, all those in favor of approving item nine E?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, moving forward, who pulled items nine H? And, nine H, please.
I move approval of the Total School Solutions Agreement for Development of District Strategic Master Plan.
Okay, someone pulled it. I, Mel, did you pull that?
I pulled.
Okay, I'll need a second for that?
No, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Well, was there a discussion?
I'm sorry, discussion.
We're asked to approve an agreement with an organization that I've never heard of, and, and I see that the purpose is to assist the district in developing a strategic master plan by leading the planning process and writing the plan. I understand that, at least I believe that this has to do with our, a goal or objective that the board had agreed to, that would, that, that staff would propose a strategic plan by the end of this school year or in May.
That's correct.
I must say that when I, as, as one of the members of the board who approved of that objective, and I still approve of the objective, by the way, it did not enter my mind that we would need outside help in that regard. I've, I had great confidence in our existing staff, that our staff who, who are professionals in the field, number one, and number two, know our district so well by now, would be more than capable of writing a strategic plan. And so, number one, I'd like to know more about why, why this outside help is needed, number one. And something more about the organization Total School Solutions, their history, who they've written plan, school plans for, have we heard from, have we heard from school districts that they have done this particular kind of work for? Why is it needed? I think we need more information in this area before we can approve a contract.
If I could, let me answer the first part of your question about, you know, why is it needed to have somebody from, from the outside? You know, with this type of work, it's, it's, it's a really good check and balance to, to have somebody that does this professionally, to ensure that, that there, there isn't a bias towards, towards a certain direction, or a, a certain scope of work. And to have that, that neutral party being somebody who is more of a facilitator to ensure that, that we have stakeholders from, from different areas, that, you know, that there are interview groups, so that we're able to kind of, like, ensure that we are able to touch kind of every, every stakeholder. It's, it's important, this is a, oftentimes, a strategic plan is, is emotional work. I mean, it's, it's setting direction for the school district, and so it, it's often helpful to, to have somebody come in from the outside to work with us, not to write it for us, but to partner with us, so that we can ensure that this is not, you know, the superintendent's plan, or a board member's plan. You know, it's, it's, it's important to have somebody that can, can keep this going. I don't have any doubt at all that we couldn't write it and, and do the work, because this is what we do for a living. And so we, you know, we get really passionate about, about this work, and we're actually very excited about this. I think one of the things that's unique about this particular strategic plan that is so forward-thinking, is that, you know, this is not just, we're, we're not just, you know, checking a box, saying that we, we have a strategic plan and direction moving forward, we're really trying to pull things together. And so with the new version of the LCAP, with, you know, we don't really, we don't have a document or even direction that even pulls in, like, our funding priorities. And so certainly, we have the expertise to do that, but it, you know, we, we all have certain areas that we're passionate about, and so we could keep each other in check. But it's, you know, if this is, if this is going to be guidance and direction for the entire school district, it, it ensures a, you know, it's, it's a level of confidence and, you know, and this unbiased approach, so that it doesn't look like it's being steered one way or another.
Okay, the second, the second issue that I mentioned is, I think that, I think it would be helpful if, if you could provide us with some specific information about this concern.
Okay.
Who they are, their background, who they, who they've done this for, some, some information that would give us a point for approving this.
Mm-hmm.
I understand, I understand your answer, Kirk, but.
But we can do that, we can, you know, this is a reputable company, that when we were at the California School Board Association, this was somebody that was referred to us by a number of people who have successfully put plans together. And, you know, many companies and organizations are, are so worried about that, that finished product, and, and we're actually doing something different than most school districts, so finding somebody that is willing to work within the timeframe that we're looking for, within the scope and requirements that we're looking for, which is more of a modern version to kind of encapsulate some things that we've talked about as a board-cabinet team through CSBA. It was definitely, it's, it's hard to find somebody that, that's willing to give you those deliverables. But I'm happy to, you know, provide you with some of their work, so that you can see as, as perhaps an exemplar, you know, so that you can see, like, a finished product from them. You know, we're happy to provide that, as well as references and other school districts as well.
If you could do that, if you could do that, and, and manage to put this on, on, on the agenda for our next meeting.
Sure.
And we would have that additional information, I'd feel more comfortable about voting it.
Okay, thank you for that, we can absolutely do that.
Anybody else? Mrs. Marcus, and then.
I had also put that on, and Mel addressed everything exactly, probably the exact same way that I would. And the only thing that I had asked is that, I saw this then as some, something as the way that, with, what we did with Lag, so that the people who are from the district, like myself, who's been, we'd be working with the group of people, which I had not envisioned at all, I didn't see this that way at all when first approached me. And I would love to see some of the other districts, so some of the other people who've worked with them sort of to give referrals, which Mel also mentioned, because I think that was very important. And also, were the, I know there were probably other companies out there, but I, I accept the fact that you're now saying that within the timeframe and the way that it can be done, these come in very highly rated, but I agree with Mel that I was not really ready to vote for this until I had more clarity.
I understand.
So for me, I, I agree with everything that has been said. My only, my only, something that I really wanna stipulate and kind of underline, is that this work has been commissioned by the school board, and so I did see, I was very happy to see that you all have talked to other companies that do this work, but I would've liked, similar to Lag, you know, who else was, was looked at, you know, what is their expertise and background? And I think it would've been, I think, to have the board kind of weigh in a little bit on, even if you narrowed it down to two or three companies, and give you feedback on what we saw value in, and the area that we wanna pursue, or the vision as to how we wanna pursue this work to be done, I think would be helpful to you going forward. So I understand that you have, it seems like this, this, the selection of this group was won because they are able to really produce something in a short period of time, I appreciate that. But nevertheless, you know, I'd like to, I just, I'm interested, like, who else did you all look at? Like, give me two more of the top two other vendors who you, or consultant groups that you looked at, and then bring it back to us, and, you know, let's have that discussion, because it is coming from the board, it is, it is something that we've commissioned you to do, and I think it makes sense to, to somehow be involved in that process. I don't know if my colleagues agree with me.
I also, I certainly realize that there's a real time constraint here, because doing this kind of thing takes time.
It does.
And so, so if we, if we could agree to table this and withdraw the motion to, to approve it, and the second, and put it on our agenda for the 28th.
Okay.
It's the information we need.
Tristan, did you make the motion?
We'll make the motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll accept that.
Great.
I did look on their website, they have a list of, a shortlist of clients, and then they said they'll send you a full list if you email or call them.
Right.
So it's easy to access.
And we've seen finished products of their work, and so, one thing I do wanna add, that I, you know, the, the entire cabinet actually had an interview with the organization, and, and one thing that, that we liked about this particular organization is that, that there was a similar philosophy when it comes to, you know, providing that, that kind of matrix of, like, different responsibility areas, and who's in charge, and so there was immediately an agreement upon, you know, again, keeping this honest work, but also a way, because not all board members are involved in every session, but one of the things that was so successful about working with Lag, was that we were able to communicate with our entire leadership team, but also with our board, as, as progress, as, as we're working, as this is being built and created. And so I just want you to know through the interview process, that that was one thing that we found very attractive, because it worked so well for reconfiguration, that there was a similar philosophy and agreement, that that's a really good, open, and honest way of, of being able to share with others the work that we're doing, and it's, it's great for communicating our progress.
Okay, so we're going to agree to remove the agenda item from the agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any, all those any against, or abstentions? Okay, thank you.
I move approval of the additional Apex Learning Digital licenses to access the curriculum subscription for Beverly Hills High School for second semester 2019-2020 school year.
Okay, I will second that.
What number was that?
Aye.
Aye.
I will second that. Let's see here, I have my questions.
You pulled it.
I did. So I just have a question, and I know that you're gonna, Dustin, you said you were gonna come back and talk about, you have, this, this is part of your, your presentation later on? Let's see here. I had my questions, so let's see if this is going to allow me, sorry. So the reason I'm, I pulled this is because I realized, I went back and looked at how this board approved the Apex Learning Digital Curriculum from, on May 7th, 2019, and the way it was proposed was that there would be an approval of the Apex Learning Digital Curriculum quote for 2019-20 school year, and the cost of the actual digital curriculum was $9,600 per year, and that there would be an additional cost of $5,600 towards course professional development for the first year only. So it said that the purpose of the program was to help with the, the ILC program, and also the Moreno students, correct? So shortly after that approval, you know, we started to, I mean, the. So shortly after that approval, you know, we started to, I mean, the board, I think, asked in a special study, a special board meeting about the courses that had been offered. And I know that it was explained to us, there was just like one English class at the time. And so subsequently, there was, like, there's different classes that we were told about through the board connection. And so I had asked, and as I saw this coming, when I saw that Dr. Bregu sent the agenda, I had asked that this be presented to us, because I wanted the board to have a clear understanding, how many courses are we offering right now through ILC? Because at the time of approval, it wasn't clear to me that that's the direction that we were gonna go in, in offering all these pilot programs. And so I want to be careful, as one board member, you know, for me, it's again, it's equity and access, you know, how are we, and I've talked to you about this before, like, you know, those ILC programs, how did we go about selecting students for those pilot programs? And I was told, when I asked that question, that, you know, it's only going to be English for now. I specifically asked, well, so...
Does that have anything to do with the ILC?
Right, but it's the Apex program, right? It's the curriculum. But that's how this got approved. In other words, we opened up opportunity to expand the ILC program as we knew it, to include some pilot programs, because we approved the Apex Learning curriculum in May. And so when I did a search for the ILC program, because I wanted to make sure, nothing came up. The only thing that comes up under ILC is whenever I pull up the Apex program. So I had, I just want to be clear that, like, and I'm looking forward to your presentation, but it's a little bit before, how can I approve this if I don't understand what it is that we're looking to do with this, you know, this lab, this lab to recover, credit recovery? I have a lot of questions, for example, and I think I emailed you, and I might not have seen it, because I was driving over here. You know, how many students actually fail our courses here at Beverly?
Can I show at least maybe the first three to four slides?
Sure. So that's why I'd ask for it to be part of a, it's kind of a standalone item, and I saw that it's a little bit on both sides, so I don't know how you want to do this. If you want to do your presentation now...
Can I make a suggestion? Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
You want to table this item till after his Ed Services update?
I think that would be a good...
So we can get through everything else?
Thank you, I would appreciate that.
We have people here that probably don't want to be here any longer, so...
I understand.
Okay.
Sorry.
They gotta work in the morning.
They're actually talking about curriculum and things.
No, I know, I'm just saying to place it in the right thing, because it deals with...
It's already polled, so...
So it's already polled, so we're gonna move, so then what, we just agreed to pull it?
Yeah. It's already polled, so we don't have to get back to it.
So should we go on to, the last item that was polled was item 9M.
We'll vote on it.
No, we're not, we're gonna vote on it after, please, Marcus. So somebody, yes, sir. So I need a motion.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the Hawthorne-Horseman fourth graders' out-of-county trip to Sacramento.
And I'll need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, I asked that to be pulled, so...
So did I.
Me too.
The first time that I heard about this out-of-county day trip, I heard that parents of fourth graders, parents of fourth graders were being surveyed about this. And I had heard nothing more, I didn't hear, and I'm curious to know, by the way, if parents were surveyed, what percentage of them opted to have their students participate, how many opted out? I'm curious about that, because, and I know that this, in a way, this becomes a matter of judgment. The first thought that hit me was that, is this kind of a trip to Sacramento, one-day trip to Sacramento for nine-year-olds, is it really appropriate? Is it age-appropriate? And what I did was, as I had opportunities to speak to people in the community, I mentioned it to them, and I asked them about it. And I spoke to, I don't know, 10 or 12 people. And everyone that I spoke to said no, it's not age-appropriate, in their opinion. And again, it's a matter of judgment, I imagine, to a degree. So the first question is, is it really age-appropriate? And then I look at the plan. And I see that the plan is that these students are to be at the Burbank Airport, and this is on a weeknight, a weekday, to be at the Burbank Airport at 5:45 a.m. So I imagine that some of them will have to get up before breakfast, 4 o'clock, 3:30? I don't know, depending on, well, they're all gonna have about the same distance, they're Beverly Hills residents. So let's say that they have to get up at 4:00 in the morning. And then I see that if the returning plane is on time, they'll arrive at Burbank Airport at 8:10, if the plane is on time. If it is, maybe they'll be home by 9:00, 9:30, I don't know. That's a very, very long day. Again, we're talking about nine-year-olds. I know nine-year-olds are tough and everything, but when I think about this, I would say this, it's a matter of judgment. From my judgment, I don't think this program is appropriate for nine-year-olds. However, if a majority of the board feels differently, I would support the majority of the board. And so I'm very interested in hearing how the rest of the board feels.
Hi, Mrs. Walker. I don't want to sit in judgment of whether or not it's appropriate. I think for some nine-year-olds it is, for some nine-year-olds, probably it isn't. My bigger concern is the cost of this trip. While it says it's student-funded, $375 per family is significant. We have 300 students in each grade level, that's $112,000. And if the PTA can't raise the money, then we're gonna be on the hook for providing this, whether parents can pay it or not, because that's the law. And that's a very significant commitment, in my view, for a field trip for ninth graders.
I wasn't aware the PTA is raising money.
Well, it says, it says right here, "student-funded."
Right, that's what I thought.
So, "student-funded," to me means, it says funds will be collected at the main office at each school, funds will be paid by parents by a check.
If I could make a...
But they make the check to the PTA, don't they, for field trips?
PTA is looking to help subsidize.
And if I could just make a suggestion, because just kind of our, like our, you know, who-do-I-call chart? You know, we try to keep it closest to the classroom, and so we're fortunate to have two of our site administrators that are here, that can kind of stand up and just let us know, you know, how it originated at the site level, because I think you still may have some additional questions. But I would like for Mr. Regan and Mrs. Kaber to just give a brief overview of like, how it was all put together, and who was included, and how you determined that this would be a good fit for fourth grade.
Hi, good evening, thanks so much for having us. We were sort of told about this program at some point last year, as we heard in the community, local schools, mostly private schools, some public schools, that are using this trip. It meets all of the fourth-grade social studies standards, and this program, Travel Teens, has been running since 1961, and they've been taking fourth graders up to Sacramento for a one, two, three, or five-day trip since 1961. In our conversations with Lag last year, and in reconfiguration, as we were focusing so much on the middle school, we also had conversations about how could reconfiguration really benefit our elementary school? And two of the things that came out were a fifth-grade trip, which hopefully we'll come back to soon about, and a fourth-grade, one-day visit to Sacramento. Currently, our fourth graders go to the Gene Autry Museum, where they get a chance to experience the California Gold Rush. And this trip would sort of take care of that standard and so much more. Once it sort of got out into the conversation of things that we were talking about, Nathan Kruger, who's a parent at Horseman, and a former PTA president, very much got involved and helped do all the facilitating for us, and helped be our number-one contact with Travel Teens. Travel Teens is a packaged program. It provides the staffing, the buses, the flights to and from, and dinner for all of the students, so that...
Lunch and dinner.
Oh, sorry, lunch and dinner. That total comes out to $375, that's how much it is. And the students are writing a check directly to an account. Nathan created it, can you tell me where it's?
It's like the BHUSD fourth-grade fund, something, right.
It's a BHUSD fourth-grade fund, so it didn't have to be filtered through PTA. The survey that Mr. Spitz referred to was to find out if this is something that we even wanted to do. Because it requires flight information and booking group tickets, it requires, the Travel Teens requires a 60-day-out flight list. And we sort of ran out of time between us saying that we definitely wanted to try to do it this year, it was our first year and being excited about it, and testing and where we were in terms of our day. And Mr. Regan and I decided that we would send out, and just a survey about who would be interested. We had 138 replies between the two schools, and most of them were affirmative replies.
Forty-eight, we had 48 said yes from Hawthorne, 47 said yes from Horseman, there were 16 maybes, and there were a few noes, but there may have been people that didn't respond, because they were no, and they didn't want to do it. We sent that out twice over winter break, unfortunately, it was done over winter break, but it was sent out twice as a reminder. And it was just, again, to get some ideas as to whether or not we even had the interest and had enough people to get the minimum of 35 students, is the minimum that the company has to run the trip.
We currently have over 60 students that have turned in their checks and their paperwork, ready to go.
A minimum.
Over 60 between the two schools. And we have 25 parents that are interested in going. We're just trying to figure out that, we don't want parents to take student spots, so the students are getting first priority, and then the parents are paying. The plan is, and what we're looking into now, is to send the students that are staying back that one day to the Gene Autry Museum, so that we would have a combined field trip for that day. We've spoken to the Gene Autry Museum today, and they have an opening for us to go on that same day, so they'll get a Pan for Gold experience. The California Changing State is the standards that they're connected to in social studies, so they'll get a similar experience to that.
The other thing to think about is that the elementary schools have a late start Wednesday, so while it may be a little bit later of a day for the kids, they don't have to come to school until an hour later on a Wednesday. That's why we chose a Tuesday to do this, because we knew that it was gonna be a long day for those kids, and so they would get that little extra time to sleep in on a Wednesday.
In case you haven't seen or looked at the itinerary, the students go to Old Town Sacramento, they go to the Railroad Museum, they go to the Capitol Building, they'll visit a Gold Rush Discovery Center, where they get to do a Wagon's Ho reenactment, including like, what's the difficulty of pioneering westward, and a Strike It Rich simulation, where they get to Pan for Gold. They'll visit the one-room schoolhouse in Old Sacramento, and it hits, again, almost all of the social studies standards.
Is there another question to ask? So my issue is only about the cost, if that's something that the district is gonna be asked to bear? If you're telling me that 60 of the students have already paid, and those are the 60 kids that are going, with some, I assume if there's financial hardship, that there are some thresholds to be met? It's not just a claim they actually have to justify? Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we don't ask for records, but we have a conversation about things. We sort of do it in the same way, that we looked at this trip in the same way that we look at outdoor education trips. And we sort of put this trip in the same category, and we've dealt with it in very much the same way, which is why the administration is taking over doing this trip, as opposed to a teacher doing it.
Okay, so, I mean, my issue is not with the trip happening, I'm fine with that, as long as no one's gonna come back and ask us for 50, 60, 70, $100,000, I'm good with it. Whoever wants to purchase the pay can, and the rest of the students can have a different experience.
So, I'll just, I'm sorry, did you ask?
No, go ahead, Mr. Regan.
No, I would just say that when I started teaching fourth grade, it was the year that the school that I was at at LAUSD stopped doing this trip. They had done it, and it's just because of budget, they stopped doing it, because they were financing it. We did do the mission that year, and we did do Gene Autry for several years after we did those two trips. There's no better substitute than this kind of learning, this kind of tactile visual learning for the curriculum. Nothing you can do in a classroom will be better than this. So definitely in support of something like this, as long as all the ducks are there in the row, and we don't, because we're getting letters about it, and emails, and everybody's in and up for it, because they don't understand that the students will have access to this curriculum whether they go or not, it's not a requirement. So I think that's where the misconception has been, that where nobody's requiring this, so the money really shouldn't be an issue at this point. It would be nice, though, that in the future, if we are looking at a program like this, and we are availing some kids who are fortunate enough to be able to afford this, the opportunity that perhaps we start thinking about either the PTAs or the district put aside budgets to actually sponsor these trips, so everybody can go. So that's, but for this, I fully, fully support this kind of learning.
Well, the first time that I read about this field trip, what came to my mind was the fact that here we are, trying at the very last minute, so to speak, being asked to rubber stamp something that we know very little about, even though, you know, we get requests for the Madrigals, and the Duke de Decas, and all of those trips, the kids going to various things. But this was an unusual one. And the first thing that crossed my mind was my two twin eight-year-old grandchildren going on a trip, they're in third grade, so next year in fourth grade, but I want them to go. And I had a lot of misgivings about whether this would be something that I, as the grand, I'm not the mother and father, obviously, but it just seemed to me that I was, I had a lot of misgivings about that. The other thing that, how many fourth graders are we talking about totally that you have between the two schools that would have been eligible to go?
212. I think our number's close to 210. 212? 220?
39, I believe.
We have 108.
Okay, so we're looking at...
40.
Not that many kids who are opting to go, I mean, in terms of the percentages. And I'm having a little bit of trouble dealing with the fact of equality for all the kids in the fourth grade then, at this point. If there are other programs out there that are closer, such as maybe Knott's Berry Farm or the Gene Autry Museum, that there's other things that they can all go to without having to pay 375 or what, however amount of money it is. So from that standpoint, I don't want to hold these kids back from going, but I have a great deal of a problem with the fact that we're talking about less than, well, maybe what is it, one out of four is gonna be able to go, or one out of...
Well, can I just add to that? So we have more spaces, we just, we asked everyone to turn in their forms by tomorrow, so I don't have a final number. Currently, what we have is 60 out of that group.
Out of over 200, though.
Right, it's about a quarter, it's about a quarter total, out of that total number. I really understand what you're saying about the last-minute piece, that's sort of where we wavered when we met in December with Nathan Kruger, and had a conversation of, do we even want to try? It's sort of late in the year, and we felt like we wanted to give it a try, as part of doing it and trying something new. We thought, you know, even if we have only a quarter of the students going, then word of mouth means that next year, we have a third of the students going, and the following year, we have half the students going.
Or you may have less.
And we may have less. And then we do something like what happened with Mr. Margot's district, and that we just, it gets canceled. But I feel like we need to give it a try, it's at a great week, right before we go to spring break, we have a Tuesday leading into a late start Wednesday.
I was also, well, now that you're saying they're only 60, I was very concerned, I was doing the numbers in my head, of 200 kids descending on Sacramento, and the logistics and the, uh-huh, and the safety and the security and what have you. And I was having nightmares if I was one of the people going, so I had all of those thoughts, and you know, I'm a teacher, so I see these things. And I personally would have probably liked to have gone on this trip ahead of time, to see what it's like, so that I could my stamp of approval on it.
So I went on the trip last year, I had an opportunity to go on the trip last year, and I brought it back to the fourth-grade team, and to the larger grade-level specialists to talk about it. It was really a great trip. It's exhausting, Mr. Spitz, definitely. It's exhausting, Mr. Spitz, definitely. The plane ride back is quiet, as opposed to the plane ride up. But it doesn't, the difference between like, sitting on the steps of the Capitol Building and hearing a senator that's local to us, Senator Ben Allen spoke to the group that I happen to be with, that it was impactful for those students in a way that the Gene Autry Museum just isn't. And I feel like, as part of reconfiguration, part of being Beverly Hills Unified, we get to give our students that opportunity that they might not have in other places. That was another piece that I was going to say. What did you say before?
Thank you.
The last piece of that is, if we get to be too many students, that what, one of the things that the trip has offered for us to do is to do the same itinerary in two different directions, meaning like Hawthorne students could start at Old Town, and Horseman students could start at the Gold Rush Discovery, and we could meet together for lunch at Sutter's Fort, or we could just completely not see each other at all once we're up there, but we would have the opportunity that we're not trying to be 200 kids in the same place.
I have a question. How many can you actually take? What, do they have a number on that, or is that?
Do they have an actual number? It's?
Buses fit 55.
You can take 55 kids?
55 people.
55 people.
So right now, I did the numbers before I came to a meeting in the district office, and at 12:30 this afternoon, I had 32 students that had submitted their paperwork and their check. One actually has actually already requested financial.
That's at Horseman?
At Horseman, right. And so we had 11 adults who also had submitted paperwork and payment, or will submit payment as well. So the ratio, like supervision-wise, currently, the way, if no other kid signs up, if this is approved, we would have a ratio of 12 adults for 32 kids. So supervision-wise is not an issue. We'll have enough adults on the guest.
You may need some supervision for the adults.
Well, there will be some, there will be some specific guidelines for the chaperones of what they are allowed to and what they are not allowed to.
It's a day trip.
Do you want to come?
I was going to say, you guys are welcome to come if you want.
I have to tell you, when I took the kids to Space Camp, that was a big thrill for me.
It was great. Are there any other questions we can answer?
So, you know, the only thing that I would say is that, because this is a first-time type of trip that this district has been, is looking to experience, I was kind of taken back that the board hadn't, that this didn't come before the board in its initial stages of, hey, this is coming down the pipeline, would you like to approve it? Because I have a lot of questions, but I don't feel like this is the right venue, and they have to do more with security. We get asked a lot of questions about security on a daily basis, and so it's a real sensitive issue. And so I immediately thought, you know, we should have probably had that discussion, not here. And so I still have some questions, but we didn't get that opportunity. Just recently, Mr. Kevin Painter sent out an email, I think it was just yesterday, saying, beginning January 21st, Hawthorne is proud to offer a board-approved new lunchtime program called Sports for Learning. Please see the attached flyer. And I think this is the model for how things should happen. That was board-approved, and then the parents got the information, and then students were invited to participate. This one was completely opposite. And so I don't want, you know, I take, I take what, I think we all take what we do very serious, and when something goes wrong, unfortunately or fortunately, have a chart or no chart, the first people who hear about it is the five of us. So I'm still hearing about the winter concert, you know, and I had no hand or, you know, in the making of that, of that event. And so all of us, I think, are still getting, you know, rumblings about what happened and didn't happen, as if we were the planners of that event, and we weren't. So similar to this, I've been asked everything from, why is the PTA paying for it? Is it?
No.
I don't know that they are. You know, why, how, you know, this is a lot, my son really wants to go. My daughter got the email, I think you sent the communication to students as well. And so parents have asked me, you know, why did the district do that? I don't know, you know?
Do what?
Sent the email to students directly with their parents. I know that happened in my house, you know, but that wasn't an issue for me. But, I mean, some parents have an issue with that, where they feel that they should have been the first ones to have that communication directly and make that decision for their child. I completely respect that point of view as a parent. I think that's responsible communication. So, look, it didn't happen, it should have happened this way in my book. I don't know if the board shares that, those views with me. But Kevin Painter's email yesterday, or two days ago, is a perfect example, I think, of how things should happen. The board should know first, especially if it's something out of the box that has never been done. I totally appreciate all the planning that has taken place, but really, it should start that, just let us know. We have no hand in the curriculum here. We're happy to, I think, bless good ideas and, you know, be behind you. But it's easier to do that when we know upfront what we're dealing with, and we've got all our questions and answers taken care of. And that has, that didn't happen for me, unfortunately. So with that, that's all I'm going to say. I honestly think that I'm struggling whether I should vote on this or not vote on it, because I have a conflict, because as a parent, I have my views about my own son. So I'm going to let the four of you decide what you want to do, and maybe I'll be a tiebreaker. But I have a conflict with this on many levels as a parent, but I'm not going to voice those here. Okay, so.
Can we call the question?
Call the question.
Since I, since I called it, since I asked it to be pulled, let me say this to you. I feel myself that I'm in an awkward position. This has already been arranged.
Right.
Parents have volunteered.
They've paid.
You've got some 60, if I understood correctly, 60 students who are, who are ready to go, who are signed up. Am I right or wrong?
Yes, that's correct. Although if we, if the decision is made to pull it, that says that we'll try again next year, that that will have to be okay. I mean, that's what it is. This part is, it's like, the way that we do field trips, the way that we do field trips is by teachers or staff finding out about a trip and deciding on what they want to do. And there's a form that comes from Ed Services that teachers fill out, that we filled out, and that comes to a principal. It talks about the standards that the trip would be addressing, where the money would be coming from. And that approval goes to site administrators, and from site administrators to Ed Services. Mr. Seaman signs off on it, and then we have our field trips. Only when we're out of county do field trips come to the board, which, so I apologize to the five of you for you feeling blindsided by this.
I didn't.
I, I'm sorry?
I didn't feel blindsided. This is par for the course. I think the biggest problem is, it's the age of the kids. We get county trips for high school students every board meeting. So I think might have, what, thrown this for the loop, and I'm completely supporting this, what have thrown it for the loop is that it's fourth graders. You know, maybe we'll get some middle school trips, maybe high school trips. We never see out of county on this for fourth graders. It's very rare, and especially, especially putting, putting it for what?
It's new.
Just a very unique.
It's very unique. So I think that in itself should have, for that, perhaps it should have come down the pike earlier, and we should have said, hey, this is coming, just be aware, we know it's kind of out of the norm, but it's something we're looking into. That's fine, and we learn from our mistakes. But I don't want to, I don't want to trip this up, and, you know, we talked about this enough.
Our apologies. Like, that's not, I never want to put you in a position where you're answering questions and you're the last to find out about that. I apologize. Again, I think it goes back to like, trying to figure out if we had interest before we came to you, to figure out if this is something that we even wanted to do. We put a survey out with the blessing of Mr. Seaman before we even got his approval officially for doing the trip, just based on the idea of like, do we want to go this far if no one's interested? If we take the pulse of the community and they agree that fourth graders are not at the right level for doing this, and we want to pass up this opportunity.
No, I think everyone here understands the value of the program. I don't want this to be misconstrued. I just think that it would have, again, been helpful to, because, as Mr. Margos said, this is a little bit different from the regular field trips or the age group that we've dealt with in the past. So it's not, it shouldn't be, it should not have been treated the same way, in my opinion. But it was, and it is what it is. But I understand what Mr. Spitz just said. We have 60 students who are very now eager to go, and they think they're going. So it puts us, I mean, we have this, it's a difficult position to be put in, and I don't mind voting for this. I would not, if I had, you know, like I said, vetted all my, my questions that I had on security, but I will vet those in private with Dr. Bregge.
And we're happy to meet with Mr. Lovelace about making sure that we take all the security measures that he feels are necessary for this trip, and you and the board and Dr. Bregge also. We'll meet before we go.
So will we also, at that time, be given the financial, what a company's got financially, or is that all rolled into the 375? Because if we have security going for this, and there's overtime involved in, I mean, extra pay for teachers and all those type of things, is that over and above the 375?
We didn't say that we would be taking any security.
No, no, I'm sorry. I did not say that we were taking any security. I did not, I'm sorry. We were just saying, talking about security measures.
And the chaperones are going to be parents, not teachers or stuff?
There's teachers attending, I believe, and staff attending. There's staff attending.
Is this, is that extra pay, or that's part of?
No, no, it's part of it. It's rolled into the 375. Mr. Regan just said, he actually told me at some point, that the cost for the Travel Teens is a little bit less, and we've padded that a little bit.
Okay.
Just to pay for the teachers that are interested in going and staff, so that we can take care of that.
Okay, so let's call for the question, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? And abstaining, I'm going to abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. We promise to come back with pictures for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we can move on. I think that takes care of all our consent calendar. Let's move on, please. Dr. Bregge, your report.
Just quickly, we're off to a really good, smooth start for our second semester. A lot of activities, a lot of, don't want to take away from Thomas's report, a lot of student activities coming up tomorrow. We're very excited about our open house and welcoming our incoming ninth graders to the high school. And, kind of a bonus for everyone to enjoy, is a three-day weekend coming up with MLK Day.
Okay, student board member.
Yeah, I'll keep it quick and short and sweet, but before, or during break, December 24th was the Feed the Hungry event. It was very successful. I took part in it, my family took part in it, and it was great to see all the families there. This past weekend, the Beverly Hills High School Deca team went to Anaheim for their district competition. We came back with 17 people, winning a first, second, or third-place award, which is very remarkable. And the next competition, which is on, I think, or just got approved by the consent calendar, is in Santa Clara in late February. And that's all for me.
Great. Thank you so much. I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Dustin, Educational Services.
Awesome. This is going to be a true multitasking event. I'm going to present behind me. So one of the things that was asked by the Board of Education was to be able to talk about why the additional licenses for the Apex Learning. So I want to start off very clean by stating that this, my ask has nothing to do with the Independent Learning Center.
What, wait, repeat that?
This ask has nothing to do with the Independent Learning Center. The Independent Learning Center is a totally different program and entity outside of what this is going to be, what this is proposed to be. So I want to be able to start with just this first, and I typically don't read slides, but I'm going to read this to make sure that we are all kind of on the same page. Not only the state of California, but the whole United States stands behind a multi-tiered system of support. And really, what that does is it helps us identify three tiers of support within schools that we are obligated, not only ethically but legally, to be able to support our students, right? And so when you look at tier one, that really is where it falls under my assistant superintendentcy, is how are we supporting all students academically to be successful moving forward? How do we keep them on track for graduation? How do we keep them on track for promotion? If you start to look at the tier two and the tier three, we have those covered now. That tier two, if you look at the true definition of a tier two, that's for that 10% to 15% of the population that just won't be successful within the general education realm. That is the Independent Learning Center. That is your 504 plan. And then when you start to look at the tier three, which is even a smaller percentage of your population, you really get into that independent educational plan or the special education support system. So I'm going to rewind us back where I'm tier one, Laura's tier three, and two and three, but we kind of meet in the middle in two. So you'll see Student Services kind of starts to marry Ed Services in that tier two. So now, let's go back to tier one. So, oh, sorry. In July of 15 of 2019, I did a presentation to you guys, and I informed you of, here's the total overall numbers of the Title I and Title III students that were identified across the district. You'll notice that I mentioned in the green on the left-hand side, there were 67 students at Hawthorne, sorry, it's easier if I just, 138 at Horseman, 189 at Beverly Vista, and the largest number was at Beverly Hills High School with 247 students. We do not, we did not accept Title I funding because a previous board a couple years ago had run into some glitches and put us on the federal monitoring program, which we pulled ourselves away from. I want to also take that number so we know that the largest population of students that need additional support is sitting in our high school, and yet we have no tier one support whatsoever. I'm going to jump to the next slide, I apologize. And I'm also going to address, on April 23rd of 2019, I did a presentation to you as well, where I highlighted the fact that we in Ed Services wrote for the Low-Performing Student Block Grant. During that time, I also took the student data and identified 191 students across the district that was not needing the state's standards in math, that were general education, not tier two or tier three, but tier one students. Again, we said, during that presentation, we started to tackle, because it was reconfiguration, how we supported the elementary and the middle school. We did that through a wide variety of our ELD instructors, which, we have English Language, English Language Development teachers at each of the campuses. In addition, we also have our Title I, our Learning Lab positions at the elementary and middle school to help support math and English. So that brings us to the high school. And we knew that this would be the year that we would start to really dig deep into the high school and start to look at, what are the areas that we are not supporting our students, and how are we going to ensure that we keep our data high and possibly continue to move it forward and keep it high? So one of the areas is, we already know that we have 247 students that we identified on the high school campus for Title I, right? That we know that do need probably additional support, and we are not providing it. In addition, we also identified students through the block grant that we know that need math support. In addition, I asked the high school administration during first semester to be able to see, how are we not supporting even the foundational level of the ninth and 10th grade students? Meaning, how many students failed first semester? So if you jump to the actual Learning Lab definition itself, you will see that we've already identified 57 students that have just failed one, the fall semester course in a single subject, 57 students.
At the high school.
One or more.
At the high school.
At the high school. So there's 57 students that we know after, after fall grades were submitted, that they failed one or more classes. Now, we know in this room that that compounds itself without any sort of level of intervention. Now, that number 57 isn't necessarily all general education students, it's a portion that are general education students. So with the Learning Lab, what we are hoping to do with the remainder amount of the, of the Low-Performing Student Block Grant, we have about $92,000 left in the grant. We hope to be able to utilize somebody like Michelle Dar, who has a previous experience of being an administrator and exposure to some of our students that might be least motivated at this time, and be able to put them in a space where they can not only receive help[1724.13] and be able to put them in a space where they can not only receive help instructionally around classroom management, time management, organizational skills, but also be provided the opportunity for credit recovery. This is not new to Beverly Hills. I'm actually stealing again this model directly from Malibu, so I wish this was my idea. I just, we are able to identify that this is a huge need that I'm sure Dr. Bregge has experienced in his former high school experience in Lower Chisholm and Luke, and even in my former experience, we've had credit recovery programs. Apex is the curriculum to be able to ensure that those students stand track to at least get close to a UC. Apex is one of the few programs out there that is UC-aligned and CIF-approved, and we already know that they're successful even just from our first semester working with it in the ILC. So this is the only time I'll bring the ILC into this conversation. But that is why this, we are asking for the number of licenses. We're utilizing the block grant to support the instructor and the materials. We have sent out invitations to the ninth and 10th grade students. Our goal is to prevent students from having to get to Tier Two, meaning having to go to the Independent Learning Center. We hope we catch them early, teach them skills that they need, and help them recruit that missing credit. So by the time they're a sophomore student, this is water under the bridge. They've matured, they're ready to do it, and they're ready to get down to business. So, I'm going to kind of jump into this next slide, because this goes hand in hand. It seems like it doesn't. So another data point, so we received back our PTSA NMSQT results, which are awesome. It's something that you as a Board of Education need to applaud yourself for, and we applaud you for supporting us in these efforts to make these numbers realistic. But there is a number on here that I need to address, and that's number five. It clearly states, we also have 18 students identified that scored below 800. Whether that's lack of motivation on test-taking, or there is additional support in a Tier One, Tier Two, or Tier Three model, that's our responsibility to identify the students and provide them with some sort of support. And this is our first swing at bat, basically. Outside of, I do want to highlight the fact that we did have a perfect score, and that same student did get a perfect score on the regular national SAT assessment as well, and we had multiple other students that received perfect scores.
Can you say his name? I got a referral just now.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
So Bradley Moon, who is a BHHS student, received a perfect score not only on the PSAT in SQT, but also a perfect score on the November SAT, the National Test Date. But we also have numerous students across the district that had perfect scores in ELA. We had two. And we also have five, and we're going to utilize the upcoming board to highlight those students, board to invite the students and to congratulate them on their hard work. But I'm going to jump back to this thing. I'll talk quick. This is why I had posted the Apex, the additional licenses, is to be able to support the learning lab, to help with credit recovery. What I do want to address and show you is you have a colored copy of what Apex actually is. And if you open up to the inside cover, you will see that we are tapping into only 1%, honestly, of what they actually do offer as a company itself, from the remediation courses, the tutorials, the, from advanced placement to the core subject areas, to middle school courses. So the world really is our oyster in the sense that we could expand down the road. And I'll ensure that I present before that happens. You know, how we're delivering to the middle school. We do have some students that need some social-emotional support that are missing large amounts of school days because they're hospitalized, or we have a young boy right now that is battling cancer. Maybe this might be a support to help them stay on track for graduation. But that's our goal primarily for these additional licenses. So I will continue to move on, and I just inserted this just to remind everyone, we are in course selection right now. That was just my last update from Ed Services, that your students will be hearing information. Our high school students are currently registering for their electives now. Our eighth graders are invited tomorrow at 5:00 to hear information from our high school administration and our department chairs. And then we move into our middle school registration the first week in February. So again, we, as a cabinet and building administration, will bring back that data to you guys to be able to show you the robust electives that we're able to offer to our students. And then we'll also identify some of the sections that we will have to unfortunately close due to low enrollment. Any questions?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Next year, it'll also be credit recovery, but also for students that want to get ahead or take other AP courses that aren't offered at high school and stuff.
So right now, it is only going to be focused on credit recovery. In a year, or maybe a year from now, I might be coming to the Board of Education with that presentation of the possible get-ahead option. I think that we have a larger population that needs support at the Tier One, that I don't want to bite off more than I can chew kind of thing, and I want to make sure that we are going into this, providing the level of support that we're going to tell the families that we're providing the students. And so our first goal really is to make sure that they can get back on track for graduation first.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thomas, could you repeat your first question? I want to make sure I understand.
Oh, I just asked if the licenses for next year are only used for credit recovery, or they're also used for students to get ahead in other AP courses that might not be offered.
Yeah. And to clarify, my answer is that it's no. We, this is primarily focused on our learning lab to ensure that we can support the level of need. As we identify more and more pieces of data, we realize that there's a larger and larger pot. Our first swing is actually probably a smaller population than we could probably actually fill, which is a little disheartening, but it's also good that we're now making movement forward to try to make sure that we are getting these kids back on track.
Okay, can you explain the licensing again?
Yeah, yeah.
You talked about licensing. That's what I'm.
Correct. So, it's the electronic seats again. So when we purchase a license through Apex, it provides us access, so a single student to the whole world. We don't provide the whole world to them. We only provide what is offered at Beverly Hills High School that aligns with, which is already UC-approved, but is in our Norman Guide. And this is a credit recovery, remember that. So the student has already previously failed biology. Now they have the opportunity to recruit that, because they've already done the seat time. They just didn't either do the work, or they didn't master the curriculum. We're going to work on mastering the curriculum and filling those educational gaps. Because second semester, they're, what we do is, they fail first, and they're still in second semester. So without having anybody there to support them or helping them fill in the gaps that they missed during first semester, we just continue to let them to fail at this point. So we're taking a really big swing at trying to ensure that we're catching these kids earlier and earlier, getting them the support they need, and then hopes that this is water under the bridge, and we'll see an increase in our test scores and respectful behavior in the classroom and time management and organizational skills.
Okay, is that it, Ms. Marcus?
Mm-hmm.
I had one question, Dustin. Of the 57 students who failed, did any of them fail more than one class?
Correct.
How many?
I don't know that number offhand, but I would, yeah, I would say it's pretty significant.
Significant in that, that number is, so it's a less, it's not 57 students. It's 57 courses that were failed, that were they?
No, it's 57 individual students.
Oh.
Our 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students have failed either previous, multiple classes first semester, or even classes from the past, that they've still neglected to either make up through taking it online. The other piece, too, from a Board of Education standpoint, one of the things that we, when brainstorming this, it was at a leadership meeting, you know, we roundtable'd it, we kind of beat it up a lot and talked about this data a lot, is a lot of our students financially can't afford to take it online, or outside, or maybe not able to take it through summer school. So again, we're impacting, it steamrolls. It starts to collect. They fail class freshman year, then sophomore year, then three junior year. And again, we're not really supporting them, and then they either go to Fusion or Futures or, you know, an outside venue, and we have no control over what they're learning. Now we have control over what they're learning. We know, you know, that they're getting that support they need, and we're trying to keep them on track, so that way it'll only help our dashboard data that much more moving forward.
Okay.
Can I also add, because I think this is important as well, that, you know, it's still a great time that we're doing this, but when I even think about, you know, putting this into place, and then for next year, it's getting a hold of those students much earlier than waiting until, you know, second semester. You know, and it's tailored, and it's individual, and that's why the instructor is so important as well, connecting with students and, you know, providing that personalization for them. But it's, you know, when you think about that there was nothing really in place. It was, you know, by luck that a student might pass that second semester, or, you know, that a counselor was able to work through with a student. You know, it was just by happenstance. This is a concerted effort to provide the intervention that actually we're required by law to provide. So I want, oh, sorry.
What's going to happen, just my final question. So you have three sections, right? And so you have 57 students. So you're not going to be able to service everyone. And so what happens to the remaining students? How will they be serviced?
Well, and I hope that's a good problem. So what we did was, we are asking for active participants on the second semester. Because we didn't have this done prior to the start of the school year and not in the Norman Guide, you know, legally, I don't, none of us kind of have a right to force, right? So we're hoping that our parents will understand, and a lot of them have been reaching out saying, where is this level of support? What can we do for my student? And so we hope that the majority of our families will take advantage of this opportunity. And we hope that we have that problem, where we have more kids wanting to be in it than not. And then I'm coming back to you guys, asking, is there any way that we can look at, Wade, for more, no, I'm just kidding, for additional support for this?
Right before the break, I had the opportunity to sit in a couple of 504 meetings and meetings with students who would be eligible for this program. And every parent was in support of it and wanted it and was very happy and appreciative that this may even be coming down the pipe. So this is something that is a need and that the community wants. And even the students who had to possibly have their schedule changed to go into it understood that it was for their best, in their best interest and wanted to participate because they understand the importance of making up those lack of credits and those classes that they failed early on so they don't miss out on opportunities for college applications and whatnot later on.
I just, I wanted to say that the falloff for this kind of lack of performance doesn't start in high school. So how are we going to address this earlier on? Because that's when we really should start seeing the signs that students are going to end up like this, that we should be more preventative. And now that we have a dedicated middle school, is there an opportunity to put this earlier?
Thank you, Noah. I, I'm going to, oh, no.
You're welcome. Rarely do my.
So we were, we were able to, so part of the reconfiguration was, this is part of the original Ed Services proposal on 423. We currently now have Sarah Wang and Lauren Stewart supporting in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at the middle school. So we have two staff members, one supporting specific math skills, one supporting specific ELA skills. Both supported through Title One funding. Also, at both elementaries, we have Michelle Duffy at Horace Mann, helping with both ELA and math. And in addition, at Hawthorne, we have Joel Wheeler, also supporting in ELA math, because they're working on grade-level specific standards during, when we're delivering ELA, they'll pull some of the kids out. The building administration has been amazing on really crunching the data and identifying these kids earlier and earlier to try to close those educational gaps. We hope that this program isn't long-term, and we also hope that it really only is for a freshman student, meaning some kids, freshmen, do get into high school and have a hard transition, stumble a bit, and we catch them, and then it's never ever a problem ever again. That's our hope. So.
I look forward to the follow-up data after the semester of this.
Okay. So let's call the question. All those in favor?
It's just a report.
I'm sorry.
We have the item, though, the Apex item.
Yes.
So.
We have to vote on it.
We have to vote on it?
Okay.
So can we go back to voting for the Apex? So.
Okay.
Can I please have a motion from the floor?
It's already been moved.
It's already motioned. So all those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah. Okay, any, all those opposed? Nobody's opposed? Abstains? Absentence? Okay, so we'll move forward with Business and Finance. Thank you, Dustin, for that, first of all. And we'll talk about ILC later. Business and Finance.
I will move for the approval of the acceptance of GAS 75 actuarial evaluation for period ending June 30th, 2019.
A second. Okay, Mrs., I think Walker Schuman had it. So thank you for that. And who's presenting on that?
So, Madam President, members of the Board, tonight we have Lou Philiger here. Lou actually got to present this report to the Finance Committee. This is the second time the Board has seen this report. You saw this back in November. Since then, we took it to the Finance Committee and had some robust discussions on actuarial stuff and discount rates. And I'm invited Mr. Philiger here tonight just to kind of go over the report one more time with the Board.
And here, I thought we had an interested parent in our audience.
I'm glad I looked interested. Yeah, it's hard. Fortunately, the camera wasn't on me for part of the time, so, yeah. Just by way of brief introduction, I'll keep it brief. My name is Lou Philiger. My company is Pacific Crest Actuaries. Before that, I started a company called Dempsey Philigrin Associates, or DFNA, that was around a really long time. I've been doing these evaluations going back to the mid-'90s. I did the first one for Los Angeles Unified School District. I figure I've done between 2,500 and 3,000 of them. So, anyway, that's where I'm coming from. I would like to call your attention to page two, which, on which I, my report, on which I give a comparison of the total OPEB liability, which is the main bogey that you're looking at with OPEB. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, AKA Retiree Health. And you basically offer two benefits. You offer the PERS Health Minimum, which is currently $136 a month. Then you offer supplemental benefits for up to 10 years or age 65, whichever is sooner. The PERS liability is probably the lion's share of the total, and that's something largely outside your control because that PERS minimum is required by law, goes up by the medical CPI each year. And so, excuse me, the number you reported on June 30, 2018 was 18.9 million? And that was a roll forward from the.
I'm sorry, can I just ask you to please reference where you're reading from?
Page two.
Page.
Bottom of the page two.
Of the, I don't think we, all of us. It's attached to the agenda, but we didn't get it. Okay, yeah, so we don't have it here, Ms. Marcus. I can pull it up. Continue.
Okay. So the middle column there shows the roll forward from the prior actuary as of 6/30/18 was 18.9 million. And then, and I'll talk about the number below that in a moment. But then the total OPEB liability that I calculated was 14.2 million, and I will go into the reasons why that's a rather significant drop. And then also, the next number is an offset to it. That's the number, that's the amount of assets that you have prefunded for retiree medical, and that's in the PERS trust. That was 1.1 million as of the roll forward date, and now it's almost 2 million because you made a substantial contribution during the most recent fiscal year, about 754,000. So, let's now move to page nine, so that I can go over, just touch on the main reasons for the change. The accrued liability tends to grow with time as employees, because it's also called the past service liability. It's proportional to past service. So as employees go through their career, they accrue more liability, and they get closer to receiving benefits. And so I've called that the passage of time. And the beginning, the beginning accrued liability is 18.9 million, passage of time is 1.7 million. So that would have put you over about 20 million if all had gone according to schedule. But all didn't go according to schedule. I made two rather significant changes in the actuarial assumptions. Let's talk about the easier one first, the change in medical inflation. Now, this is not, this is not how much your premiums go up by, but this is a measure of the core inflation for medical care, and that goes up by a much lower rate. And California law calls for the PERS Health Minimum to be inflated by that each year. And, you know, I went back and looked at what they were for the past five years, and there was only one year in which it was above 3%. All the other years, it was in the mid-2s. So it came out to a geometric average of 2.66%. Now, the prior actuary was using 4.5% assumption for this, sorry, 4.5% inflator for this assumption. That has a huge impact on the liability. As you can see, I didn't bring it down as low, as low as 2.66. I brought it down to 3% because I thought that was more realistic of what's probably going to happen in the future. And that change alone decreased the accrued liability by 3.6 million. Then, the other thing is the change in the discount rate of 4.4 million decrease. As you all know, as interest, if you're discounting with a higher interest rate, you get a lower present value. So it's like a bond, it moves in the opposite direction. So, it's like a bond, it moves in the opposite direction of the interest rate. So, it's good to be able to use a higher discount rate if it's prudent to do so. GASB 75 has kind of tightened up the rules. The rules under GASB 45, where the actuary has significant discretion in what to use as the, for the discount rate. However, under GASB 75, you have to use, do this thing called the crossover test, and it measures the point at which you're going to cross over from having the benefits being fully funded to having to pay out of the general fund at that point, at some point in the future. And based on discussions with your staff, I found out that you have a policy in place where you're going to contribute for the foreseeable future, 2% of covered payroll into the PERS trust. Well, I did another calculation based on the crossover test. It works out that if you, if you continue that policy of contributing the 2% of payroll, in addition to making the pay-as-you-go contributions, you will be fully funded with respect to this liability within about a 10- to 12-year period, which is excellent. So, that, that's a win-win for, for another reason, too, is that permits me to use a higher discount rate. In fact, not only permits me, but probably encourages me to use a higher discount rate because GASB doesn't want the number either significantly understated or significantly overstated. So, the actuary is kind of straitjacketed to some extent with respect to what discount rate to use. So, that was my reason for using the 5.9% discount rate. 5.9 wasn't my invention. That came from the PERS people saying, you know, the money manager saying, here's what our, you know, benchmark is for this fund, it's going to be 5.9% over the long run. So, if you assume that the 5.9% is correct, and if you assume that that 2% of covered payroll funding is going to continue over the foreseeable future, that permits me to use the 5.9% as opposed to the 3.62%. So, I would, I would characterize the 3.62% as having been a bit on the conservative side. And, but the other thing to remember about all this is, none of this is carved in stone.
Right.
So, let's say that two or three years down the road, you decide, we can't afford that 2% anymore, or that's excessive, and so forth. Well, what's going to happen is, we're going to use a lower discount rate at that point, your liability's going to come back up. So, this is really more of an accounting expediency than anything else. It's not something that's tied to your reality, directly tied to your reality of how you're, how you're going to be contributing and so forth, which you're still completely free to proceed however you see fit. So, and then there's one last small item, the 1.6 million loss from all other sources. When you take over another actuary's work, they do a bunch of things that are really black box, so you can't figure out what they did. I didn't think that the 1.6 million was excessive in either direction, so I didn't pursue it any further. I just threw that in there, and I come up with my accrued liability of 14.2 million as of 6/30/19. And then, again, we're subtracting off assets of 1.9 million, so that gets back to, if we go back to page two, your net OPEB liability is 12,288,565. And does that go onto your financials directly? Well, sort of. It goes into your liability column, but then you have this thing, now I'm looking at page three, the top of page three, and this is going to, then I'm going to stop for questions. So, this is something that I had to get used to, these deferred inflows and outflows of resources. Basically, an actual gain gives rise to a deferred inflow of resources. That's something that you're not going to recognize as an offset to your asset, sorry, offset to your liability in the current year, you're going to reflect it in future years. And so, it has the effect of a liability on your balance sheet in that you're not going to carry the full 18 million on your balance sheet. You're going to carry 12.2 million as the liability, you're going to carry 5.7 million as a deferred inflow of resources. So, after all this gyration and all these calculations, what is the net effect on your financial position from 6/30/18 to 6/30/19? It's $10,000. So, much ado about nothing, as far as I'm concerned. And any questions?
Do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything. Mr. Spitz? I mean, let's go around, Mr. Margot.
Yeah, I wanted to go to page, I believe it's 10, 11, sorry, page 11, where you referenced earlier the 10 years where we would be fully funded.
Mm-hmm.
So, I would have to direct this question to Mr. Roach. What is our current plan in regards to this funding?
So, currently, the board has decided to contribute 2% of salary each year towards the OPEB liability. And I have gotten no other direction from the board, so in our multi-year planning, we still have the 2% each year built in.
Okay, so what is the 998, 268? Is that, is that representative of the 2%? Because that's not the pay-as-you-go.
No, the district funding policy, the last column is, it represents the 2%.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And that is, that may look larger than 2% if you're doing the math in your head because it, that is 2% plus the pay-as-you-go calculation.
Okay, that's, that's, so the 998 is not part of that?
The 998 is just something I show in all my reports, that if you wanted to fund it over 20 years, that's how much you'd have to pay.
Okay, that's, that's why I need a clarification. Thank you for that, okay.
It's, by the way, let me make sure I get this right. Is it Philiger?
Yes, perfect.
Yeah, Mr. Philiger, first of all, I think I want to apologize to you. I think if we would have realized that, I didn't realize that you were here, that you had come here to make this presentation. If, if we had, I would have asked that this be earlier in the meeting, and I apologize to you for taking the time that we did.
No problem.
Really appreciate your being here.
Thank you.
I understood your presentation, and I have no, I have no problem with the, with the reduction that you saw fit to make from the prior projections.
Mm-hmm.
And I, it's obvious that we're on an excellent trajectory of being funded in 10 to 12 years or so.
Yeah, it's perfect, really.
So, so once again, thanks for being here.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Your explanations for such complex material were really accessible, so I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Because this can look overwhelming to even, you know, very experienced business people. So, thank you for your explanations. I'm really happy with our position. I think we've done, as a board, a lot of work to try and create a sense of stability in, not only in the way that we, you know, vote and the values that we follow, but, you know, in making sure that things like this are nailed down, and we have a plan. And, you know, going from a very chaotic environment to one where things are more predictable and controlled, for me personally, is a very satisfying thing to see. So, you know, I feel like this is a great step in the right direction. I feel like we really have much more mastery over the material now, and that we're on a really good path. So, I thank you for that. And I, and I agree with Mr. Spitz. Had we known you were here, we would have moved you in, probably the audit report as well, because he's going, he's coming next to the beginning of the-
Yeah, he has to listen to me in addition to everything else.
Thank you.
In the, keep it brief. I will pass, I appreciate your time, and I, I'm grateful that, as a person who's not as well knowledgeable about this, that we're in a good position. And I remember when I first came on the board, or when I started to run for the board, I was hearing comments about OPEB and not being funded or not contributing, and I, now I feel like it's under control, and I'm very grateful for that. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have any questions, and I just want to apologize. I should have really moved you to the front.
That's okay.
I apologize to you and to the other gentleman. So, let's move forward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Great. So, passes 5-0. Thank you. Moving forward?
I'll make a motion to accept the 2018-2019 audit report.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. Thank you, Mr. Spitz. We are ready for you.
Hadley.
Tonight, we have Mr. Hadley.
Hadley is fine.
Mr. Hadley. To present the audit report from last year.
And I apologize for keeping you so late.
It's okay.
But we just love your company.
You've been here longer than most of us.
I like to, I like to, you know, hear, you know.
Thank you.
All right, so, I just do it brief, okay? So, we issue three reports that we render our opinion on. So, page one and two is our independent auditor reports. So, this is the, is our, you know, like, our report on the financial statement. And we auditing June 30th, 2019. So, for, for the June 30th, 2019 fiscal year, we issue a unmodified opinion on the financial statement. So, which means the number percent in the statement, we believe is not materially misdey, and the financial statement is prepared accordance to general accepted accounting principle. And this is the best opinion that audit team may receive from outside auditor, all right? We also issue a state compliance report, so the CDE requires us to do some state compliance procedure, and like, for example, like attendance, LCAP, or instructional minute, et cetera. So, so we did those required procedure, and we also render an unmodified opinion. We don't have any issue on any state compliance program, all right? And the last report that we also render our opinion is the federal compliance. So, district, most of the California, I mean, most of the district receive federal dollar, federal grant, and for the, for Beverly Hills, this year, we testing the special education And we did our required audit procedure, and we also went and, went and unmodified opinion. So, no, also no internal control over compliance issue as for the single audit. So, any question?
Do you have anything? Yeah, I just had something brief. So, and I guess I'll direct this to Wade, but, and I know, I think this is your first audit, right? This, this one, this 1819 is your first?
So, technically, 1819 was prior to me, but I will answer any question the board has.
Okay. So, in the findings, it is, and I will say, ever since I've been here, and it's almost as long as Hadley's been here, actually. But ever since I've been here, it's the same findings about ASB receipts and payroll every year. And we, the board pushes back on that department to find the ways to correct this, but the same things keep coming up. So, so my concern is, what can you tell me? And I know, I know you, I talked to Dr. Bregge about this, I know you will be coming back to us about more of what the department is going to do. But when you read this, did you think there are ways that we can solve these problems once and for all? Or is this going to just continue to be human error and no accountability on this?
I would have to say, in my experience, this is my fifth district, there has been no district I've worked in that did not have ASB findings.
Okay.
ASB, working with students, ASB, if you, part of ASB is training of students on governance.
Right.
So, it's, so students learn through making mistakes. So, ASB is, is almost always a finding in some form or fashion.
Okay, I'm glad you explained that, because in honesty, that hasn't been explained to us in the past. So, we thought, is there something we can do to kind of eliminate that from, from the following year? And apparently, probably because of the way ASB works and that there's new students every year, so there's going to be new opportunities for people on that learning curve to make those mistakes, that's perfectly understandable. I'm hoping that the other two instances, mostly that shows up payroll and purchasing, we all, we will be able to get tighter controls over.
So, when you have a small district, it's sometimes difficult to get separation of duties between payroll and HR. So, some of our findings are related to the fact that we don't have enough people to do separation of duties. But I intend to work with Luke and his department going forward and do kind of bi-monthly meetings to see if we can figure out separation of duties. And maybe it's just approval paths, so that maybe Luke and I are in approval paths, so the people that are actually doing one HR form don't actually approve it in payroll. So, there's some methodologies we can use to, to address payroll findings.
I really appreciate those answers, Mr. Roach, because in the past, we were often fed with, no, we'll take care of it, it'll be fixed for next year. So, I appreciate the honesty in those answers, and it helps make my expectations more honest.
And finally, on cash receipts and not having the backup for cash receipts, honestly, the only way that that will get better, we've started the process with getting our new board policy about reimbursement and travel and things like that. The other way it gets better is actually holding the line and saying to staff that if you don't have a receipt, you don't get reimbursed. So, after not getting reimbursed a couple times, people miraculously come up with the receipts.
So, are you holding the line?
Yeah.
So, we need to start that process, that discussion. But that's the way you force people to hold the line.
And Julie just had an email that she sent out, I think it was yesterday, that was kind of holding the line when it comes to, you know, here's what you need to do for your reimbursement, or you don't get it. Good. Thank you very much for those answers.
You're welcome.
Mr. Spitz?
Well, I'm so delighted with this audit report. It's the fourth one that I've, that I have seen and examined myself since, since this tour on, on the board. This is a clean audit, and it represents, I think, a turning point, the finances of our district. If, if those of you who have this on your computers, if you look at page 63, it, it details the differences in the final unaudited book accounts and the actual from the audit. And just, just in a, just in a few words, what this shows is, if you look at the excess of revenues over or under expenditures, that is, in terms of, did we have an operating surplus or an operating deficit? The final unaudited book showed a, an operating deficit of 2,172. After the audit, changed that to an operating surplus of 1,830. And where the differences are, by the way, are basically in two expenditure accounts. One under, in the certificated salaries, the, the unaudited total was 33,700,000. The audited was 32,100,000. So, a difference of a million six. A million, a difference of a million six, reduction in the certificated salaries. I'm curious as to how that came about. And then, the second one is in contracted services and other operating expenditures, which is a catch-all. But the unaudited amount was 12 million, about 12,900,000, and the audited was 10,700,000, for a difference of 2,200,000. So, those, those two accounts make up this, this huge improvement in the bottom line. And what I'm wondering, Wade, is, do you know in those two accounts, why those big differences came up?
So, the number that says final there in that column that says budgeted amounts, those were the final budget numbers? Those were not the unaudited actuals? But those were the final budget numbers that we presented to the board last year. So, the $33 million was what you saw when we did the estimated actuals when we adopted the budget in June. That's one of the things that we were looking into, to try to get some more synergy between that budget number and what actually is going to happen at the end of the year.
Right.
So, I can't tell you right now exactly what went into all those components, but there is a little bit of a disconnect between what we call position control and budget. So, in the current system, it's not linked 100%, so that there's some possibility where there can be a disconnect between the budget number and the final actual number. But as we move forward, especially into the new system that- But as we move forward, especially into the new system that we're going to be adopting soon, we're hoping that there's that linkage between the budget and the actual number that we end up with when we do the audit report. So that's all I can really tell you at this time about that certificated salary number. But we expect that difference to get smaller and smaller as we move forward, because it's really a credibility issue. When we bring a report to the board in June and say, we expect that we're going to spend $33 million in salary, and then just three months later, it's really 31 million, we lose a little credibility as a business office. So we need to work on that to make sure the numbers we present are closer to reality.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I'm just, I'm really happy with this audit report. I feel like, I mean, I haven't been here to see all of the prior years, so I, you know, I don't, I'm not saying I see the same things coming up, but I'll...
It's been worse.
Yes, I'll take the words of my colleagues for that. But I definitely think that the recommendations are reasonable. I feel like those are things that we can accomplish with a little more work and a little more attention. And I hope that, you know, it's a priority for this board to really, to be able to work with you and stay on top of those things, and hopefully have even more improvements by this time next year.
I was just looking over briefly, since I just picked this up this afternoon, and I'm looking at some of the things from the findings and then the changes from this year. And I know that with Wade being here now, I think that we're going to see a great deal of change in the accounting and the way that some of these items where there seems to be some problems, like things that weren't dispersed, or things without purchase orders and things like that, will probably get much more attention than perhaps they have in the past. So I'm thinking that we're going to see a great, I hope a great deal of change in the problems with the findings and then the way they've been addressed. Hopefully, we will clear up some of those.
I don't have any comments. I agree with everything that has been said by my colleagues, and I want to thank you for your time. And Wade, I'm looking forward to more improvements, although I am very happy, as everyone has stated with the program or the audit this year. So thank you for bringing this to our attention. I need a motion from the floor.
We have a motion.
We have a motion, I'm sorry. Let's vote then. All those in favor of approving the audit for 2018-19?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Okay, we're moving on.
Thank you, Hadley.
Thank you. Have a good night. Moving on to planning and facilities.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Leighton Consulting for geotechnical observation testing services during construction of Elrodeo Seismic retrofit and modernization project.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I should have asked for, any questions? I'm sorry.
No, I like your approach.
I didn't think there was any questions, but... Any others opposed? Any abstentions?
I move for the approval of amendment number two to the agreement with GEO Instruments to provide perimeter dust, vibration, and sound monitoring services at the Beverly Hills High School BHS site.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any others opposed? No.
I move approval of an agreement with Twining for construction materials, testing, and inspection services for the Elrodeo Seismic retrofit and modernization project.
Second. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it passes 5-0. Moving on. Communication from board members.
Tomorrow's the eighth grade or incoming ninth grade open house at the high school. We look forward to seeing everybody, and get your tickets for the Dance Company Show at the Wallace Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of next week, 7:00 p.m.
I will be here tomorrow, as I have an incoming freshman, and I got my tickets for the Dance Company Show. Did I do well? Did I do okay?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Spitz?
Nothing. We have a good time.
Okay.
I'll just say, welcome back to everyone. I hope everyone had a restful, healthy holiday. A lot of people I know are sick, so I'm happy to be back.
Thank you.
Well, I wasn't sick, but it's great to be back. And I want to thank everyone for their wishes, their calls, and their emails, helping me getting better. And I hope to be back soon, even full strength. Thank you.
I just want to welcome you, Mrs. Margot. I'm happy you're here. Congratulations on being the VP of the board. And I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Thank you to my four colleagues, my five colleagues, with the student board member who, we had a long night, but I thought the discussion was good. And I thought it was lengthy, but very good for us. So thank you for your time and all your questions, and to the staff, of course, for providing us insight to today's work. And with that, I'd like to conclude the meeting. And we're going back to closed. Thank you.
No, we can find it. We could probably stay. Well...
We're done. Meeting is adjourned.
Yeah, we should probably go to the conference room, because they'll be cleaning up.
Where's the conference room? We checked across the hall. Was it open that morning?
I didn't check, so I can go over there and find out.
Let me check. Maybe he has. Romeo, Romeo.
Oh, yeah, they...
It's unlocked.
Perfect.
It is? Okay.
I thought it was good, though. Like, I thought that there was more discussion. There was more discussion during, like, there was more dialogue, I thought.
Yeah, no, it's okay. And, you know, I thought the...
We're going back to...
Oh. What's going on? Are you... I didn't say we're going back. Are we done?
No, it's for sure. It's not a tough...
It is not too bad, dear.
I don't get it.
Yeah.
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 Yeah.